Next roll call, and I'll call roll call. Donna Hentges.
Here.
Gary Hartman.
Here.
Ray Huber, here. Ed Harabi.
Here.
Barb Johnson.
Here.
Tom Vonhoff.
Here.
Lee Watson. Okay, real good. Next thing on our, on our agenda is approval of the minutes from March 9th, 2020. Now, everybody's had a opportunity to review the minutes. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
I have a, I have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, indicate by aye. Aye?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
In favor, nay? Okay. I think that's everybody. Minutes have been approved. Next item on our agenda is the Donald Geeson variance. PL number 2020-032. Request for variance to increase a legal nonconforming structure by 63% of the existing square footage, which is over the 50% expansion allowed by ordinance located in section 36, Helena Township, current zoning A1.
Jack, there's a.
And Greg?
Okay.
And Greg, you're gonna present this?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So, we have the document camera here for the Commissioners in the room and the people in the hall, and then for Commissioner Hartman and Commissioner Watson. I'll just be going through the packet, through the attachments, in order as they are in the packet, so you can follow along that way. As you indicated, Mr. Chair, the request is a variance to increase a legal nonconforming structure by 63% of the existing square footage. The site location map you see on the screen here shows the subject property. The address is 27901 Church Avenue. The property is located in the hamlet of Union Hill. This is a seven-acre parcel. Flipping over now to the aerial photo describing the site, you can see the north half of the property is largely agricultural land that joins with the farm field next door. The property has an existing home. It was originally a farmstead, I believe from like the 1930s. So, there are a couple agricultural buildings still on the property, and then there's a detached garage here on the south end of the property line. The home, as indicated, is right here, just adjacent to Church Avenue, which is a county road. To the south is 280th Street West, which is State Highway 19, and you can see the property abuts the Union Hill baseball field. Now flipping over to the site map that was in the packet, the applicants, what they're looking to do here, they purchased, or Mr. Geeson purchased the property from his parents. He provided a very good narrative explanation of the family's history in the Union Hill area, so they're very much part of this community. So, now they purchased the home and with his wife and kids, they're looking to expand it. This was a 1930s farm home, so it is fairly small. It does not have a garage attached to it. So, what they're requesting is to add a garage to the east side, which would be going further away from the county road. You can see right now, the setback to the structure is 58 feet, 6 inches. The required setback to a county road is 150 feet from the center of the road. So, this is, is pretty tight to the, fairly tight to the road. And then to the right-of-way of Highway 19, we're 151 feet. So, the structure does meet the setback to Highway 19, but it does not meet the setback to, to the county road, Church Avenue, which makes it a nonconforming structure. Per ordinance, nonconforming structures are allowed to expand by 50% of their current square footage, as long as they don't go closer to the road. But what they're requesting here is to add a garage with living space above. So, the expansion would, would take the structure from 2,048 square feet up to 3,332 square feet, which is an increase of that 63%. For putting the new garage on here, one, a couple things that they've agreed to do, they're gonna tear down the detached garage that's to the south, which is actually right on the property line and is 40 feet from the State Highway 19 right-of-way. So, that garage will be removed, and then the new garage will be added with living space So, the next page I'm flipping to is an elevation. So, the existing home here is on the left, and then the new garage will be on the right. Feedback issues. And then above that will be some living space. They're not proposing going to the floor plan, the garage, and then above is just a family room. So, they're not adding any bedrooms or anything like that to this living space. It's just mainly family storage area. The applicant met with the township last week. We're getting the feedback. And per email I sent to you, the township did make a motion to recommend approval of the variance. Staff is making, is recommending approval of the variance as well. As indicated, they're removing the garage and then going back to this site plan. They're also removing, there's three driveways to the property. They're also removing one of the accesses to the, to the county road. So, that county transportation supports that as well. So, the applicant is here. Mr. Geeson, if you would have any questions of him, otherwise I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board regarding this variance?
Mr. Chairman, I have one for Greg, and maybe it was addressed, but I missed it. Is there a requirement that the existing 22-by-28 garage be removed before new construction?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbie, so, we're not gonna remove it, we're not requiring it to remove before new construction. What we're kind of timing, and maybe the applicant can better answer the timing, but typically what we will do is allow, you know, when they're putting up a new storage building, we'll allow them to build the new building, move the stuff into it, and take down the old structure, so they don't have stuff outside. But I don't know if there's any time, does that sound right?
Yeah, we plan on using it kind of as a staging, but it, it will be in the way of the new garage, so we will not be able to use the new garage which is there.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a requirement that we have to, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
How, Mr. Chairman, Greg, how do, how do you get to the new garage? I see two driveways, but I don't see them going to the garage.
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, so the driveway here to the, on the south side that goes to the garage that will be removed, kind of goes to what the applicant, Mr. Geeson, just said, that they won't be able to use the garage unless this structure goes away, because the garage doors will face south. So, they'll have to take this down so that they can make the turning movements into the garage. Going back to the elevation, this is the south elevation, so as I said, the garage doors will face south. So, as he said, to be able to use this, this building essentially has to go away.
And Mr. Chairman, now, I don't know if it's north, I don't see signs, but there's another driveway on the top towards of the page. What's that driveway for?
Yep. So, this driveway north of the home, that's the one that will be taken out. The access will be removed. And then there's a field access going back to the aerial photo. So, the driveway we were just talking about is right here, and then there's a field access just to the north that allows the farmer to get into that field. So, the, the only really residential driveway will be the south one here, right along the south lot line that will go into the new house addition.
Greg, I have a question on the east property line. I'm a little confused by the map. It says it has a 75-foot setback from the east property line?
Yep.
It looks like you're real close to the east property line, unless I don't understand where the property line is exactly.
Sure. Mr. Chair, so the, the east property line would be, on this map would be right here. So, with the garage added, it's approximately 75 feet to that backside there.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? This is a public hearing. Anybody like to address the board regarding this variance?
Mr. Chair, I would just note, we've been monitoring the emails, encouraging the public to reach out to us ahead of time. We emailed you late today, the neighbor to the east, just on the east side of the ball field, they did send an email to the county in support of the variance request.
Okay. Okay. Well, no one's gonna address the board. I'd have a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Not in favor? Okay. We're good. Now, what is your wishes regarding this request?
Mr. Chair, based upon criteria for variance consideration, I recommend approval of the requested variance to increase a legal nonconforming structure by 63% of the existing square footage, which is over the 50 cents, 50% expansion allowed by ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
There's a second already?
Gary Hartman.
Oh. I have a motion and second to approve the variance. All in favor, indicate by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, nay? Variance has been approved. Brad, do you have anything else from the Board of Adjustment? Okay, do I have a motion to close the board?
We didn't have to take a roll call vote.
Do I have to take a roll though?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think just for the record, let's do a roll call vote. I think we know the outcome, but let's just do a roll call vote.
Okay, do a roll call vote on the, on the wishes for this variance. Donna Hentges?
Yes.
Gary Hartman?
Yes.
Ray Huber, yes. Ed Harabi?
Aye.
Barb Johnson?
Yes.
Tom Vonhoff?
Yes.
Again, is there a motion to close the Board of Adjustment?
I make a motion to close the Board of Adjustment meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and second to close the Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Not in favor? Board of Adjustment is closed. Turn it over to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome to the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for July 13th, 2020. We will start with our roll call. I will call the roll. Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman. Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Vonhoff, here. Commissioner Watson.
Technical difficulties, so we'll just go with six tonight.
Our next item is the approval of the June 8th, 2020 Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. All the Commissioners have been sent copies of this and an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes as written? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chair, we approve the June 8th, 2020 minutes as written.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Hentges. I have a motion and a second. I will now call the roll to approve the minutes. Commissioner Hentges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman? Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vonhoff, yes. Commissioner Watson? Okay.
So, you left the meeting?
Oh, okay. Apparently, Commissioner Watson's left the meeting. So, that will be the, the vote minutes are approved for the June 8th meeting. First item we have this evening is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a Planning Commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. There are three items. I will read them. Three, one, it's a public hearing, Ganson rezon, number 2020-027. It's a request to rezone 40 acres from A1 Agricultural Preservation District to A3 Agricultural Preservation Density District. Location is section 23 Bell Plain, and the current zoning is A1. Would anyone like to remove that from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Mr. Chairman, do, we late got the Bell Plain Township approval. Do we have to say that now, or at the end, or?
Um, we can absolutely say that right now and add that in.
Well, I think that's what happened, right? Bell Plain approved?
Yes.
Greg?
I think all the townships approved.
Yes.
They're all approved.
Yes, thank you for clarification on that.
Okay.
The next item is item 32. It's the NOVAC rezon 2020-028. It's a request to rezone 40 acres from UER Urban Expansion Reserve District to UER-C, Urban Expansion Reserve Cluster District. Location is section 36, Helena Township, current zoning is UER. Anyone wish to remove that? Okay. The final item, 33, is the public hearing, North Star Mudjacking. The number is 2020-025. It's a request for an interim use permit for home extended business to operate a mudjacking company, and location is section 36, New Market Township, and the current zoning is UER. Okay. Seeing that no one, like any of these items removed, I will entertain a motion now at this time to approve all of the items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question regarding the mudjacking. In the email that we just got regarding the New Market Township.
Yes.
If, Greg, am I to understand that, let me just read it here. It is our assumption that the township therefore had no concerns since the site is off the county road, but we will make sure that this is the case before.
Mr. Wagner, could you address the Commissioners's question?
Is that what we talked about previously?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbie, we do know on the, the mudjacking IUP business that they did meet with New Market Township back in May. They had the discussion with the town board. We did not receive the official recommendation form. We reached out to the township clerk, well, the applicant responded to county staff indicating that it did not appear that the township board had any issues, mainly because it was off of a county road, not a township road. We received an email from the town clerk, I believe Friday, that just indicated the township just requests a copy of the permit. So, our, our assumption therefore is that the town board at their, when they met with the applicants back in May, did not have any concerns.
Would that have to be highlighted in the motion, or whenever a motion is made for the approval of this?
We have a, we have the, in, in the staff report, it can be conditional on the township recommendation, and we could certainly reach out to the town clerk and make sure we get a copy of that before this would potentially go to the board in August, so.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, then we'll make sure that that happens as a, as a condition of this approval. Are you, you're good with that?
Yeah, that is fine.
Okay. We do, I am ready to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion before we move forward on any of the items? Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hentges. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Who is it?
Ed.
Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Robbie. I will now call for the vote on the consent agenda. Commissioner Hentges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, nay?
Yes. Okay, I have heard that. Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vonhoff, yes. And Commissioner Watson has left the meeting due to technical difficulties. The motion passes. All of the items on the consent agenda are approved. So, if you have come this evening for one of the items on there, your item has been approved. Our next item is a public hearing, advanced.
Oh, just a minute. He has a question. Gary Hartman has a question.
Okay, before we move on to the next item, yes, Commissioner Hartman?
Am I supposed to be getting a video on the meeting?
Okay, it's a technical question. He's asking, he's on Skype if he can get a video of the meeting.
Commissioner Hartman, at this point, no, you will not get a video on Skype. When Brad does the presentation on the zoning ordinance, you will see a PowerPoint presentation pop up. But at, at this point, no, you will not see it.
Is there another medium that he can watch it live?
He can watch it on YouTube. That's what we're trying to figure out, if there's feedback issues, if he's watching.
Okay, is that what's causing the feedback?
We're not sure.
It better is.
It's coming from a caller.
Okay.
May, maybe we'll, we'll try calling Commissioner Hartman separately and see if we can get it figured out.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hartman, they're gonna contact you and see if they can work out that technical difficulty with you offline, so we can address the feedback issue.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, very good. And we will move on then to our, our next item, which is our public hearing to, and the applicant is Advanced Exhaust Solutions. That's number 2020-029. It's a request for an interim use permit to operate a home extended business to design and manufacture exhaust components in the RR1C district. Its location is section 12 Cedar Lake Township, current zoning is RR1C. And Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Schmitz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On the screen is the site location map for the 43 acres proposed for the interim use permit for a home extended business. The property is located about a third of a mile east of County Road 87, which is Valley Forge Road, and about a quarter mile north of 240th Street East or County Road 62, which is a paved county road. From, from this map, you can see that the properties on the southeast and north side of, of the subject parcel are rather large agricultural and rural residential properties. The properties to the west, however, are quite a bit smaller. They range in size from two and a half to about 11 acres. They are all part of a subdivision called Meto View Estates, as is the applicant's parcel. These properties were part of a residential cluster subdivision called Meto View Estates. Home extended business interim use permits are allowed in the rural residential cluster districts, subject to certain performance standards, including a minimum lot size of 10 acres, maximum non-resident employees of one, all storage of materials and equipment and manufacturing have to be done within a building, and, and you're limited to three commercial vehicles amongst some additional performance standards. I'm gonna jump to air photo here. So, this is the applicant's property outlined in red. You can see that it includes a combination of wetlands, woodlands, grasslands. There's some pasture land in there. The building that the applicant is proposing to utilize for the home extended business is this one located in the southeast corner of the property. This building is located over 300 feet from the east property line and the south property line, and it's over 1,100 feet from the nearest home. So, based on those separations, along with the trees and, and topography in the area, staff isn't requesting any additional screening as part of this interim use permit. Our environmental health office has reviewed the septic system for the property. The previous owner did have a home extended business permit here for a construction business, and there are bathrooms in the building. Through the review of both the building and the, and the home, the environmental health office felt that the septic system is compatible for, for that use, so no update to the septic system would be required. Our county building official has reviewed the building and the use, and she is requesting a change of occupancy permit for the building. The building was used predominantly for storage prior to, and now it'll be more of a, a manufacturing use, so she wants a change of occupancy on that structure. And one of our draft conditions of approval is that prior to the applicant locating in the building, that he would receive a building permit and complete any needed repairs here. Staff has received a number of calls from the residents along Metal Lane here, which is a paved township road that accesses, zoom in here. So, Metal Lane is the only way in and out of the applicant's property. His driveway comes out of the end of Metal Lane here, up, up to the home and then, and then the building. So, we've received a number of calls. I forwarded an email onto the Planning Commission that we received. I also forwarded a petition that the applicant, that the neighbors were getting signed as of this afternoon. The concerns raised related to noise, odors, hazardous waste licensing, but probably the biggest concern that the residents have is truck traffic coming and going from, from the business. This is a five-ton township road, comes through relatively small lots that residents are used to walking on, kids are used to biking on, so they are concerned about traffic. So, what I'd like to do at this point in the presentation is turn it over to Marco Popovich, the applicant, and he can talk to you more about what Advanced Exhaust Solutions is, what they produce, how they would propose to utilize this, this facility, and then also try to address some of the neighbors' concerns. About that, Marco?
Thanks, Marco.
Thank you. Could you make sure that you say your name as you, as you start, just so we have it in the record?
Yeah, absolutely. Marco Popovich, Cedar Lake Township. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. So, to get into exactly what Advanced Exhaust Solutions is, we are a company that designs and manufactures industrial exhaust components. We've been, up to this point, and, and continue to do so, subbing out or subcontracting out 100% of our manufacturing. So, we do the design, the sales, quality inspections, everything like that, but we do have independent partners throughout Minnesota and Michigan, actually, that build the product for us. And it's, it's a very good relationship we've had, and it's worked very well for us. As we continue to grow and mature, we're always looking for manufacturing avenues that will actually align well with our outsourced contractors, as well as fit the needs of some of our customers. And in an effort to do that, one of the things that we constantly get feedback on from our, our subcontractors is, hey, you know, we like our lead times, we like, had three or four weeks, could you maybe figure out a way to handle the, the buy-ship stuff? So, what I mean by that is, small accessories, bolt and gasket kits, let's call them like UPS-able type product, they would prefer not to have to deal with. And the, the thought or the intended application for, for this property would be to cover that, so they don't have to worry about like the little odds and ends that can concentrate on the large fabricated components, whereas we would ship out the gaskets and the bolt nut, and these are again UPS-able type items, but also to utilize the manufacturing area within the, in the property as a sort of skunk works type facility where we can actually do time and motion studies on our manufacturing processes to help train our subcontractors to become more efficient, more quality-oriented, and, and to make sure that, you know, we're, we're staying competitive in the market they're in right now, because there's always a looming threat that, you know, someone else can do it better, faster, cheaper, and this is our way of helping our, our sub-suppliers that have helped us get to where we are, to help them with the training and whatnot. In addition to the quote-unquote skunk works or the time and motion study aspect of it, we'd be looking to do, you know, a little bit of, you know, first-off prototype-type small systems, and basically stuff that fits. I mean, the property itself, it, it is a, it is a wood pole structure, so as far as lifting capacity goes, you're limited. Power actually is the most limiting factor, because it's only got single-phase service at the, at the property. So, really, the idea of, you know, a manufacturing mecca is just never in the cards, never possible, because, well, you can't. And the IUP we're looking to get only allows for one non-family member employee, so realistically, you're, you're pretty constrained at that point. But it does fit the need so that our, you know, our engineers can work with a shop person and say, okay, how do you better do this? How do you better position this, fixture this? How do you cut some waste out of there? What do you do there? So, they can push that to the people who do the heavy lifting for us and get them up to speed. That was pretty quick, so any questions?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Popovich?
Yes, Mr. Popovich.
So, you are not, I'm just, you talk fast.
Yeah, sorry.
You are not gonna be running a full-scale manufacturing operation off this property?
No, that wouldn't be possible.
All right. So, you're, when you, you talked about UPS-able or something like that?
Yeah.
Is that, I see the neighbors are complaining about trucks when they talk about delivery trucks. Is that the nature? Is that the nature of the delivery trucks for the most part? Will it be UPS, FedEx?
Sorry, yeah, that would be correct. The problem with the product we ship is that sometimes it's not heavy in the scheme of industrial equipment, but it's like, you know, 200 or 300 pounds, right? Which makes it so, well, UPS, I mean, it was 75 pounds, now they're down to 50 pounds. Some things aren't UPS-able, so then how do you move your stuff? Well, anything that we need to be powder coated, if we were to build it, we don't do any painting, by the way. Wet processes, we got some powder coders down in Mankato. Very, very good at what they do. Very tight relationship. And they actually can come pick it up with a straight truck, so a single-axle straight truck, and bring it down there, and they ship to our customer for us. So it's a really good relationship there. But there is the one staff who is like, well, besides these little kits we talk about, if we ever were to make something that, you know, is arguably small by the standards of the stuff we do produce, it gets outside of the world of UPS pretty quick. But the way we're looking to do that is, that would be a very rare instance, mainly just a backup or quick turn because there is the customer need every once in a while saying, hey, look, I need it now. And that's something we're trying to bridge because in the world of subcontractors and outsourced manufacturers, everybody likes a plan, and they like to build the plan. So dropping something in and saying, I need it today, that doesn't work well. And that's something we're trying to do to really kind of alleviate the stress and the pressure from them, maybe perhaps taking on ourselves, again, within the boundaries of what we can actually do here. Again, so it's, it is pretty limited, but yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
On this petition, it says that you will have four, up to four semi-trucks a day, which is eight times because it's in and out. Is that true?
Yeah, so where that came from was when we were originally talking to staff and brainstorming, we were saying, well, what's the worst-case scenario? How would that be? And being the engineer, it's like, okay, you want worst case? I can give you a very worst-case scenario. And that came from in 2019, the summer of 2019. That was actually the traffic load that three outsourced contractors had altogether. And they were moving a lot of product. So that would be the worst case, but it wouldn't be what we're doing here. So the worst-case scenario for us probably is, starting up, we, like, today, one thing that we've received is like a forklift. So I could move some stuff around in the shop and start cleaning out some walls. That came in on a 48-foot drop-deck. That was an exception. A couple other pieces of equipment might come in on that if we do this. Other than that, outgoing product would be on straight truck, and incoming material can be on straight truck as well because McNeil Steel can actually bring it to you on a straight truck. It doesn't have to be a semi. And the frequency, I guess, which is the most concerned, is how often? Well, with us just testing and doing one-off short runs, it could be very infrequent. Infrequent is like, once you get your load of material, because you do want to load up the truck the first time around so you don't have to keep paying for freight. But once you get it, there's enough on there that could essentially last months. So the traffic for what we're doing, because it is such a light manufacturing or just really, oops, somebody screwed up, we've got to hurry up and make something, it's so infrequent that I don't think the traffic volume, while that would be worst case, will never actually be through. And we don't actually have the capacity with the manpower to ever achieve that type of volume.
So bottom line, how many trucks a week?
Including UPS-type trucks or?
No, straight trucks.
Oh, straight trucks? In a steady-state operation system situation, maybe one? It's one of the things we control. We control the shipping hours. We can say, hey, between nine and three, make sure we're avoiding all the traffic with the buses, maybe. The buses and people going to and from work and whatnot. But also, it's just the nature of what we're trying to build there. We can, you know, inventory up, then ship it out at once. And like I said, our contract manufacturer that does our powder coating is really good about coming and getting that and working with us on that. So I don't think that the, and the straight trucks, obviously, are like the Schneiderman's furniture truck, kind of like that. 26,000 GBW, single axles.
And Mr. Chairman, are you aware of this petition and some of the questions they had?
I was made aware of it today before the meeting, yes.
And so did you want to address some of them?
Absolutely, yeah. If you wanted to go ahead and, if you had any of, because I think we kind of talked to the traffic quite a bit.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we could go through the bullet points they had in that letter that they submitted?
Yes.
Mr. Popovich. Chemical hazardous waste which can lead to potential groundwater pollution. Will you have hazardous waste? Will you be using a lot of chemicals?
No, no chemicals. So the processes we currently employ are CNC plasma cutting, which has to go through a downdraft table into a spark collector and then through a fume collector. So it's filtered air and it comes back into the shop. So it actually doesn't actually go to ambient. That's one. We don't have any CNC mills or lathes that are, you know, using a flood coolant system. That isn't a process that we currently employ. It's mainly metal fabrication where you're cutting flat plate, rolling it, forming it, welding it, and whatnot. And like I said, we don't do any paint, so there's no wet paint process, so there's no booth.
Okay. The rest of them, they kind of tie together. I think we addressed trucks coming and going during a workday. Noise pollution from the large deliveries. I don't, not sure there are large deliveries at this point, based on.
I don't foresee there ever, I mean, and, yeah. I'm trying hard to put myself in other people's shoes too as well. It takes some reason. Yeah, a truck coming in, I guess, that would be the noise that it comes in. But like, as far as like, you know, equipment operating outside, there's none of that. We can't, I mean, metal will rust way too quick in a humid Minnesota summer. So everything is being done inside. Yeah, I can't imagine a whole lot of noise pollution being emitted.
The street, it's a residential street and it's a five-ton.
My understanding from talking to the township is actually it was built to a nine-ton standard plate. However, they flag it down to five-ton to prevent excessive damage. And it's something we've talked about, and I've actually talked with some of my neighbors at it too. And it's kind of interesting how, when you do that, it actually invites the larger trucks with more axles because they can actually meet your weight capacity and you kind of push out the smaller straight trucks. But yes, it is flagged to five-ton, and we obviously would have to abide by those rules.
Right.
Mr. Chairman. Marty, could I ask you a question? The conditional use permit that was in place, that was for, that was Tim Giles, correct?
Correct, Commissioner Henshaw. He had a construction business. As far as exactly what occurred here, I assume employees would come to this site, load up for the day, whatever type of vehicle they would need, leave, and then possibly return in the evening.
Yeah, I have to tell you, I'm having trouble figuring out why advanced exhaust would be worse than what Giles had going because he had construction trucks going up and down that road all the time. I live out there.
Yeah, and I think part of the confusion came in with the information provided by the applicant that said one to two deliveries per day and one to two pickups per day. So people were looking at worst-case scenario. That's what I was looking at when I was reading it. So I think there was some confusion as to how many deliveries and pickups there are. I think Marco has provided a lot of detail to how his operation runs here tonight on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huber.
I have a question for the applicant. On the equipment, you say potential press brakes and sheet-mel rollers, but that's pretty light sheet-mel that you're dealing with?
Typically, up to quarter-inch is what we mainly would process.
Or inch or smaller?
Yeah, I mean, for the press brake, as far as that goes. I mean, the plasma cutter capable of up to about inch, inch and a half. But the press brake's only going to do a quarter-inch or so.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions at this point?
I've got a question for Marco, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Robbie.
I, this will be self-contained in that off-building. All the production will be self-contained inside.
Absolutely.
Is that, I'm assuming it is, is that building insulated?
Yeah, it's actually insulated pretty well because it stays cool even right now.
All right. So I guess I'm perceiving that based on the type of business we're talking here, we're really not talking about any sort of noise pollution and looking where your building is at in relationships to the cul-de-sac and the street. You know, that's, I forgot what the distance is, but it's set way back on your 43 acres.
Yes, sir.
So the chances of really hearing anything is possibly remote?
I would say it's pretty remote. And just to be, just to paint a picture, probably the most noise emitting action or activity would be when a truck comes in, that first load of raw materials, and you're offloading it because you're going to have a forklift operating. And we can turn the beepers off because that's fine, we can do that. The factory can't, we can. So you can take that off. That's the only time you're doing any activity outside of the building itself, is actually picking off the truck and bringing the material in. And then once it's in, the doors go back down.
That was a question I was going to have. You're not going to be offloading in the cul-de-sac.
Oh, no, no.
They're going to be driving down to the building for, obviously, your convenience, yeah.
Yes, sir. For convenience, obviously, but also there's actually plenty of room to turn a 48-foot around.
Okay, all right. And I guess I'm assuming too, with a five-ton maximum, will not create a problem for any of the trucks that are coming in?
No, it's something we have to plan around.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you can, when you're initiating, hey, we want to be, you know, last drop off, first pickup, so that way they're not coming in with a full truck.
Do you know when that, when the road was last resurfaced and conditioned?
That's a great question. I've heard it was recent, but I just moved out the last couple of months. It looks like there's some subbase. I mean, I was a road supervisor in a previous life, so roads are very near and dear to me. And it looks like this one's got, it's due for a mill and overlay because it is a 20-year-old road, and between us only lasts about 30 to 35 years, even with good maintenance. So it's time, but that doesn't alleviate the fact that I still got to play within the five-ton limits.
Because I was out there, the roads look very good condition.
Yeah, there's some rutting and some alligator and some just transverse cracking, but, you know, it's probably still 75, 80 on a pacer scale.
Okay. Thank you, Marco.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
What about the future? If you decide to grow, then you're aware you'd have to reopen your conditional use permit if you went beyond the one non-family employee?
As I understand right now, the interim use permit only allows for one non-family employee. Relatively speaking, the other encumbrances, as far as power and then just the type of traffic you'd be generating to get past that to, let's say, you know, five employees? Well, right now, one plasma cutter is about 73 horsepower when you're figuring in the fume extraction, the plasma, the table. And I can only have about 100 horsepower of single-phase power out there. So there's other limitations, like you don't have three-phase power. So what are you going to do about that? There are just other encumbrances that would limit growth at this facility.
And then, Mr. Chairman, do you have family members that work with you?
My wife does.
So she's maybe out in the shit.
No.
She does the bookwork.
She does the bookwork, and she would tell you that, you know, she's not a real employee, but yeah, she's definitely the backbone of a lot of stuff, so.
Okay, thank you. We may have additional questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Johnson, just to follow up on that question. Right now, the performance standards for home extended business, it does limit what to one non-resident employee. So it would take an ordinance amendment in order to have additional non-resident employees on the site, which would be significant. This board would be holding a public hearing on that before we would ever go there, so.
Thank you for that clarification. This is a public hearing. At this point, if anyone would like to come up and make comment or questions, they can approach the podium. And when you get up to the podium, there's a sign-up sheet for comment. And please write down your name on the sign-up sheet, and then start your comments with your name so we have that in the record. Thank you. Good evening.
May I take off my mask?
Yes, you may.
So my name is Karen Schelhaus. I am the brand newest member of the Meadowview Estates neighborhood. We moved in, we closed on the house in May. So I am his closest, oh, second closest neighbor. The, yes, yes. So I love watching the cows walk around on his property that he loans out to one of the other farmers. So, but based upon the proposal that was submitted, that all the paperwork that you have, the proposal, we, as the neighbors, all got the wrong idea, I think. I think the proposal in and of itself, although describing the overall company, AES, does not describe what I think he would like to do on the property. And I hate to ask this, but would it be possible to rewrite your proposal to reflect exactly what you want to do on the site rather than the, everything that your business does so that all of us as neighbors have a really clear and clear understanding about what it is you plan to do? And, you know, future expansion plans? Because we talked out in the hallway about future expansion plans, which include finding commercial industrial facilities not on our residential street. So to just help me out, to make sure that what you've asked for is really what you're going to get and that kind of stuff? I don't know how bad and horrible it is to ask, but I think that that way, all of us have a, everyone in the room and everyone who may be listening has a really good understanding of exactly what you plan. Because unfortunately, the document, because it does describe your entire business, is misleading about what I think you plan to do at your house, which did cause some serious concern for me particularly because I have a special needs child. And I was like, oh, my goodness, this kind of traffic. Oh, my goodness, I moved out of Lakeville so that I could have no fear of my child being hit by a car. So again, I don't know how hard that is. I don't know what I'm asking, per se. I don't know how entailed that would be.
Right. And the permit only allows for what is allowed. And that's kind of the way that it's structured. And Mr. Pokovich's testimony becomes part of the legal record here. And he is bound by what he has said in here and by this testimony that he gives here. So, and I think that that's an important, and you bring up a great point on this because a lot of times people see an application and they go, oh, my gosh, you know, this is not appropriate for this area. And then when they start seeing, well, this is actually what's happening, then that's, you know, and that's, you know, that's why we have these boards. That's why we're here, exactly for that, for the reason that you say, is to make sure that that's a congruent use, that it's going to work in the neighborhood and not create all types of problems.
Yeah. And I appreciate that all of you, especially Commissioner Henshaw. She says she lives right there. And I believe, Mr. Harabe, you also said that you've driven by there and you.
I've been in the neighborhood too. I live very close as well.
So I appreciate that all of you are, you know, extended neighbors, if you will. And you also have the same concerns, and you helped us to make sure that we're going to, you know, make sure that this is what we will all be happy with and so on and so forth. So I just, I appreciate all of your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
And did you have anything else?
Yeah, I'll just say a few words.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And to understand this too, if a permit gets approved, if they're not operating within the permit, then there's recourse to stop that action. And so they can, you know, if they do something that's not within the permit, not allowed, then the county has authority to do that. Which is part of why we require properties to have these types of permits if you're, and go through this process to evaluate whether it's appropriate or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
When you come up, sir, please make sure you sign in as well and start with your name as well.
My name is Peter Kirchner. I'm at 5641 Meadow Lane. I'm across the street from Karen, and I'm the first house on the right. And I live over where the Horseshoe Lake is in there. And I want to concur with what Karen said initially. We were led to believe something a little bit different than what Marco presented up here, based on what the packet was saying. And we never met Marco until just five minutes before we walked into the room. And, you know, based on this packet here, we were led to believe that what was in here was certainly not compatible with what was going to go on in a residential neighborhood. And because of what this said, we got together as a neighborhood, and everyone that lives on this street was in agreement that it wasn't a good idea to bring an industrial factory into this neighborhood because of the amount of traffic, the amount of children that live in here, and in part. And in part of Marco's, uh, decision to buy in here, it was his intent to put the factory in. And one of the things that we all decided to do when we bought into this neighborhood was to buy because it was a residential neighborhood and it wasn't, it wasn't a factory in here. And I don't know if anybody on, that, that's in here would want to have a factory put in their backyard or in their neighborhood, and that's what our biggest concern was. So what we're worried about is a neighborhood that has a industrial park in our backyard. And that's what, that's what we're mainly concerned about. We're concerned about people that don't live in there, delivery trucks, employees coming in and going that we don't know, that see our neighbors' buildings and say, I wonder what's in their building. You know, stopping by later on at night, that, that want to go look inside there. Or trucks that come flying in, and the amount of damage that is done to the road, and there's a tremendous amount of kids that play on the streets that might get hit by a car or play on bicycles and the amount of damage that it does to the road. So we're concerned about this. Based on this packet, if you look at his, on Marco's website, we're seeing pretty substantial-sized exhausts that are built for ships that are gonna be delivered on trucks. So our concern was, wow, this is a, this is a big deal. This, they're not making cupcakes in this residential business. This is a, this is a factory and there's industrial parks for this. So what Marco presented out there was totally different than what's inside here. So I don't know what's true now. I don't know what he told us is true or what is in here is true. I don't know if part of what he said is true or part of what's in here is true. So I don't know. Seven people that live on this street signed a petition saying, we're against what's in here. What he said is something that's a little bit different. At this point, I, I don't know. I don't know what to believe. So that's where we're at at this point right now. So I, I think what Karen said is pretty good. I think Marco needs to rewrite what's actually going to happen, so that we're all on the same page, so we know what is really true and what's not true. So that we're, we could really make a decision based on what's really gonna happen back there. So we're not unreasonable. You know, we want him to have a business if it's, if it's gonna be something that's not gonna create a lot of damage to the roads and it's not gonna have hazardous waste and pr- problems such as that. So that's our, our big concern, and I think that's reasonable, and something that might be compatible for a residential neighborhood. So that's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
I will say that the night that I drove down your street, it was, uh, probably six-thirty, seven o'clock, and there were two boards on hoverboards going down the street, just, and then there was a basketball net on the end of one, someone's corner, and there was another couple just walking down the street. It's very residential. And it's, and it's, you know, and that's, that is, right. And it's, and, uh, so it has that feeling. And, and, um.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might, I, I am a neighbor too. I'm the farm that's right above his property. Um, and we breed and raise horses up there. And so we want to live the same way that you people in your residential area want to live, the people that have animals. I don't want anything back there if there's gonna be pollution and a whole bunch of noise and a, and, and all sorts of things going on. That is not what I believe is going in there, based on everything that I heard and read, but remember, I live there. So if, if, if it gets voted okay, he has to live up to the terms of that conditional use permit. And, and I know what they are, and I'm close. So I want you to keep your residential districts. I want to be able to keep my farm and our family and raise our animals, and we have such a nice community out there.
One, one more thing too.
You want to come back up to the podium and speak?
Yeah.
Peter, thank you.
But I would, I, I would be appalled if I thought there was a heavy-duty manufacturing operation going in there, and I don't believe that's what's going on.
Uh, when Tim Giles lived there, uh, I understand he had a, um, construction business that he operated out of there. And he sold me the property, but at the time he sold it to me, I think his construction business had wound down to a, pretty much a halt. But when Ted lived there, his construction business was pretty much going pretty, pretty strong. And Ted has some horror stories about the types of trucks that were coming in and out of there and the amount of nails that were being dropped on the roads and the, the mess and the problems. And again, that business is not compatible for a residential neighborhood, and that's what we have to think about. Is it, is it, is a, is any kind of business compatible for a residential neighborhood like that? I mean, if you're selling diet pills or you're selling cupcakes or you're doing something mail order, that's one thing. But when you're getting into industrial products and other things that are pretty substantial, that's a whole different ballgame. I mean, we're, you know, and, and I think that's the concern of our neighborhood. We're, we're in a residential neighborhood and we want to live in a residential neighborhood, not an industrial park, and that's our big concern.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was surprised that you were all so opposed to this, because I was later along before Tim Giles was. And I know what was going down those roads and in and out of those buildings. That was some pretty heavy-duty construction stuff going in and out of there. And you're right, he did wind down. And it got a little bit calmer, but it belie- if I thought that it was anything like that, I just, I just don't believe it is. I think it is not. He's not even really doing any manufacturing.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to make comment? Okay.
Let's see, if we're, if we're wrapping up with the public comment, Mr. Commissioner, a couple of things. One, from staff's perspective, I agree with what, what Karen has requested. I think it would be appropriate to get an updated narrative from Mr. Popovich that clearly explains how he intends to use this particular property, because I think the existing narratives, um, eh, make it very questionable as to how the property could be used. So I, I think that is a, a good point that should be, should be done here. Also, Greg Wydner, who was kind of watching the emails come in, he received a comment from Rob Punschakar, who is the chairman for Cedar Lake Township. And I know Marco contacted Rob on a couple of occasions, but Rob indicated, um, the only comment I have is that we would have a road review with the applicant to identify any deficiencies here. So the township would like to meet with the applicant, take a look at the road, do a review to, to see what condition the road is in, uh, before he starts operating.
Mr. Chair Marty, so that we'll do a kind of a condition of the road, assessment of the condition of the road as, as of right now.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm assuming based on, based on this comment. They want to take a look and see if there's anything that needs to be repaired kind of maybe ahead of time to, you know, take care of something before it gets worse.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get a, someone with more, much more knowledge than I have. So Marty, you, um, you've been following this all the way through, and I always rely really heavily on what staff thinks. Um, what are staff's feelings? Do you feel like this is, this could be compatible with the neighborhood that it's in? Are you comfortable that it's a limited manufacturing-type business? Help, help me out here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, um, I, I totally get where the neighbors, neighbors are coming from when they came in here, concerned about truck traffic. Their properties are of such a size that they can't apply to do a home extended business out here, with the exception of one. We're introducing truck traffic. It's their cul-de-sac street, so I, I totally understand that. Uh, I think what Marco was indicating here is that, yeah, I, I understand that too, and, and my business model is significantly less traffic than, than what was talked about in the narrative. Uh, my business model here with one non-resident employee, um, will meet the requirements in our regulations. From staff's standpoint, I'm very comfortable with the business operation, uh, the one non-resident employee, the types of equipment that would be used, uh, the frequency of the deliveries that Marco is talking about here, but I don't think it would have a significant impact on the neighbors. So I, I would be comfortable recommending approval of, of the request based on, based on the discussion here tonight. But I would request, as, um, one of the neighbors mentioned, uh, update that narrative prior to county board action on this thing.
A more, much more specific outline of the narrative updated, that would be a condition of that. I agree with that as well.
Mr. Chair Marty, the narrative would be shared with all the res- uh, neighbors?
Yes, we could certainly do that. Um, I've got at least emails for one of them that probably could spread it around.
Mr. Chairman, I live at a townhouse, and the lady across the street gets at least one shipment by UPS every day, so if he maybe has personal things coming by UPS too, so I don't know, we should be too hard on him.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in my seventies and retired, and UPS is my best friend, because with COVID-19, I don't go out very much. So I probably get one FedEx and one UPS every day.
Any other, uh, comments? Were there any comments, uh, Marty, from, uh, the public or, um, that we, that came in during this public hearing?
Uh, the only one that I received was the one from Mr. Punschakar.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for sharing that. Before I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, I just wanted to verify that. At this time, I, uh, if there's no one who wishes to make any further comment on this, um, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Huber. I will call the roll call on this. Uh, Commissioner Henses?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vonhoff, yes. And, uh, Commissioner Watson has left the meeting. Okay. Public hearing is closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for action or for the discussion on this item before us. Yes, com- go ahead, Commissioner. Hartman, yes.
Based on the criteria for approval and conditions listed in the staff report, I could recommend approval of the home extended business interim use permit for Marco Popovich to operate Advanced Exhaust Solutions.
Thank you. I have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Hartman. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman. I was gonna say a second, but with the conditions that we discussed.
With the, uh, narrative description?
And meeting with the town board.
Great.
Okay, uh, I have a second. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Robbie? And, uh, Commissioner Hartman, there's, uh, uh, friendly amendments to your motion to, uh, include the, uh, uh, updated narrative and more specific outline and a meeting with the town board. Do you agree to those?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have a motion at this time. I will, uh, call a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Henses?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Hartman? Commissioner Hart- okay. Uh, Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vonhoff, yes. And, uh, that is, uh, motion passes. Um, so it has been approved. There are conditions that you have to meet, uh, Mr. Pokovich, uh, as you know from, I'm being here. And, uh, I, I really appreciate the neighbors coming in and, and, uh, talking to us. And, uh, Mr. Pokovich, it's a great idea to talk to the neighbors about this and work with them, to make sure that this works well as we go down the, the line here and make sure that, uh, it's good, because it's, it's where you live as well. So, very good. Thank you very much. Good evening. Our next item this evening is the, uh, public hearing on our Scott County zoning ordinance, uh, number three and number seven, and is to request to consider amendments to the Scott County zoning ordinance. And, uh, I believe, uh, that, uh, Brad Davis, our planning manager, will be making the presentation this evening. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Good evening. We'll pause here and let people enter the room and just take a moment.
That's fine. Uh, we'll take a two-minute break here, just to let everyone. We'll, uh, now reconvene and we'll move on to our presentation. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
All right, so tonight I have a PowerPoint presentation that, um, will highlight the revisions that have been proposed to the county's zoning and subdivision ordinances. I'll spend a little bit of time going over the background and purpose why we're looking at updating the ordinances, what the process has been over the last year to year and a half, to get a lot of input into the, uh, recommendations that we're gonna be covering tonight. I'm gonna cover, um, the key revisions that the staff believes we're looking at, changes here in the ordinance. I'm gonna go through all the comments that we've heard, um, in the last month since we've notified people that the public hearing is coming up. We've received some written comments, so I want to make sure we talk about those. Then, of course, tonight, we're here to also get additional comments, and I know there are people either in the room or out in the hallway that are here because they want to speak to this, so we, we will give them a chance to do that, answer any questions. Ultimately, I'll be looking for a resolution that I've provided you, and I'll put it up on screen so the audience can read it. Looking for a recommendation to move this ordinance to the county board. And then I, I'll provide a suggested motion as well. So that's, um, the outline for the, for the presentation. So this slide, just as the purpose of the zoning ordinance, as you well know, um, this group deals a lot with our zoning ordinance and our subdivision ordinance. When it comes to the zoning, the goal here is remote public health, safety and welfare. That's kind of the guiding language that's in all of our enabling legislation that allows cities, counties and certain townships to do zoning. Provides for the orderly development of land in the unincorporated area. Notably, this time around, we're really working with 10 of our 11 townships. As you may have read in the local papers, Credit River took one step closer to becoming a city. And so they've been doing their own comprehensive plan and will be adopting their own zoning and subdivision ordinance. And so therefore, this updated ordinance will really apply to the 10 townships, knowing that at some point, the city of Credit River will have its own zoning, planning. They'll have their own planning commission, their own decision-making process. These ordinances are important for the staff to really administer the ordinance, make sure we have consistency, that we can point to specific language when we're working with landowners, residents, developers, people that want to put up a use on their property, our townships. Of course, your role is the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission, ultimately, the county board. All of us hopefully are looking at the same rulebook when we're making these different decisions. And those rulebooks really are then contained in the two ordinances. And just the listing of some of the statutes there that we have to follow when we go through this process. So when the county updated its comprehensive plan, one thing that we need to do for the map council's process is to update our official controls. Those official controls really mean our ordinances, our zoning and our subdivision. So we need to get those updated to be consistent with the plan. So during the planning process, when we identified different land use categories, different areas where we wanted to see a little bit different type of development, we knew that at some point, we would have to adopt the right zoning districts and get them in place to really implement those ideas. And so that's really the final step in this comprehensive planning process is to update your ordinances, update your zoning map. So everything is consistent with your plan. So we're in that cycle. The map council asked that you adopt your ordinances in a pretty timely fashion. It had been nine months from the date of approval, but with the pandemic, it provided some leeway. And we're probably about 12 months from the date last summer when the board adopted the 2040 plan. So we're not too far off. Frankly, we were on track to probably have this public hearing back in March or April. That was our goal. And with the stay-at-home shelter, we knew that that would not be appropriate to really try to hold a public hearing at that time. And so we waited until the summer and ultimately picked this date in July when we could at least get some people able to come into the room like they are tonight to listen and comment and know that we had a good system in place for people to follow on remotely on YouTube and provide any comments via email. So Greg is also monitoring that inbox to see if any comments come in. So a little bit about the process. When we first started looking at some of the topics coming out of the comprehensive plan, we knew that we probably weren't just creating things out of thin air, that probably some of these issues have been dealt with in other growing counties like ours, in other metropolitan areas. So a lot of it was just some research. What are some really good practices or good approaches that we're seeing in other communities? Oftentimes, it was in our own communities. We spent a lot of time looking at standards in our cities because we wanted to see how different those are to what we require outside the city limits in the unincorporated area. Looked around the region. When we looked at the Hamlet district, we learned that this type of zoning has been applied in some counties over in Wisconsin, where they do have a lot of crossroads, Hamlet-type developments. And so we tried to learn from them. So we looked not only across the county, but across the region just to see what the best practices are. You know, as a planning commission, that we held monthly workshops for the last about year and a half where we would bring different topics to you, get your input, maybe even get your direction on a couple of things before we would go out to the town boards and present some ideas to them. And then we would get their input, their reaction, and then we would come back to you and report what we heard. It looks like we have support here. We don't have much support here. And we did a lot of workshop items the last year and a half. And then when it came to the mining chapter, that's the chapter that got the most attention really in terms of getting a complete rewrite. And so when it came to the mining, we had other stakeholders really interested in what this new mining chapter was going to look like. And so they also attended some of those workshops. They provided some comment letters. Some of them are still here tonight just to see probably the process to the end. But that topic is where we got a lot of people outside of staff in the planning commission. Every quarter, we would go out and meet with the township supervisors. We met them in either groups of three or four and present all the same information, you know, different topics, whether it's the new zoning districts, whether it's the new Hamlet overlay district, changes to our stormwater regulations, changes to accessory building size, all the different topics we're going to cover tonight. We previewed them with the town boards. Always had really good turnout. Most of the supervisors would come, some of their staff, whether it's their engineer or planner, would also be in attendance. We had county commissioners attend and listen in. Always gave good feedback, gave us good direction. I think we modified and changed some of our positions as a staff based on what we heard from the town boards. They introduced a couple of topics that were not even on our radar when we started the process, but they really saw a need to make some changes. We'll talk about a couple of those here, but those are really good. When it came to the new Hamlet zoning district, we wanted to have, we wanted to make sure that people that live in the Hamlets or own property in the Hamlets understood what this new zoning concept is and what it would look like. And so earlier this year, we were able to hold two open house events. One was at the Spring Lake Town Hall, and the other event was down in Blakely. And we'll have some slides talking about what we learned at those sessions. We officially notified the town boards in mid-April that the plan was out for review. We had posted on our website, invited everyone to take a look at the actual documents, actual maps, allowed the town boards to review it and provide any comments that either they're May or June. And then they even had a chance at their early July meetings if they wanted to to give us some input. When we get to the zoning map, there's 78 property owners where we're proposing some zoning change. And we felt that we were obligated to notify those 78 property owners about the change. And so included in your packet, in your packet, is the copy of the information that we sent to each of those property owners, letting them know what zoning district they're in today, what they're being proposed to move into. We gave them kind of a one-pager on the standards for that new zoning district, table of uses that would be allowed in that zoning district, and then a chance to give us any comments ahead of time. And I think between our staff, we've probably had 10 different property owners that were contacting us when they got those letters, wanting to learn more, just curious, some really, some good comments. And some of those comments, you'll see when we get to the slide of some specific things that they requested. Tonight's the public hearing. Ultimately, you're just the recommendation body. Ultimately, the county board needs to adopt everything we're talking about here tonight. And so when I go to the county board, right now, we're targeting August 18th for that adoption. I'll go with what we've heard from all the town boards, their recommendations, what are here tonight from your recommendations. I'll share all the public comments that we've heard. I'll share the minutes from tonight's hearing so they have a full array of all the input before they make the final decision. So the next few slides, talk about key revisions, and then we'll take each one at a time and talk a little bit more about them. One big change is establishing four brand-new zoning districts. This is directly out of the 2040 comp plan. We talked about having a new rural business zoning. We talked about moving from one industrial zoning district to two and so kind of have your lighter industrial and then a brand-new heavy industrial zoning district. Creating this brand-new Hamlet mixed-use overlay over our historic Hamlets like Marystown, Union Hill, St. Patrick, Blakely, Lydia. And then one that probably didn't get a lot of attention because it was really more of a state-mandated zoning district from the MPCA, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And that's a very specific zoning over the closed Louisville landfill. Beyond just new zoning districts, some other bullets there. Looking at maybe a little bit more bluff protection for new buildings that go up along our bluff lines. Looking at some deeper setbacks for homes if you're creating a lot in one of our identified bluff areas, going from 30 feet to 50 feet back from the top of that bluff. For our accessory dwelling units, those have been pretty popular in our rural areas. I think we've permitted 12 or 14 accessory dwelling units, commonly called granny flats. Right now, the limit is you have to be a family member to occupy those accessory dwelling units. In the last cycle, we got a lot of comments that, for whatever reason, it works better if the caregiver lives in the accessory dwelling unit, not just the family member. And so we've recommended loosening that up just a little bit. As I said, we've really overhauled the Chapter 10 mining and put out much more clear standards on reclamation, much more clear standards on reporting your activities so that we know what progress is being made towards reclamation. A lot more information upfront when someone applies for a mining permit. Marty will go over some of those specifics. Next slide here, I think one key revision is being much more clear, hopefully, on site access requirements, being much more clear on when turn lanes will be required for development. We've had a lot of debate, I'll say, over the last 10 years from developers debating when turn lanes should be required for the traffic that's generated out of their new residential development, when those turn lanes should be installed, should it be immediately before the first building permit, should be phased in. So we tried to be much clearer on those things, and we'll talk about that in more detail. We've updated some signage standards. Some of our business areas are getting a new look, particularly 69 and 141, where we're putting an overpass. That overpass has created some questions from some of the business owners there that have had traditionally shorter signs, and that overpass blocks the signage. So we know that we need to kind of rethink how we allow collar signs in some of those new interchanges going up. We tried to set clear standards for some of the uses that really pack this room when it comes into a public hearing. Whenever we deal with anything with dogs or horses, we tend to pack this room because people either love them or hate them. And they either want to be next to them or they don't want to be next to them. And so we tried to be much more clear on standards for kennels. Day parks is another one that, in the last 10 years, has generated a lot of interest. Notably, Kitchi Yapi, the YMCA camp, kind of went under this title. And we knew that when we were going through the process, that we probably didn't have really good standards for day parks. And we hopefully have cleared that up. Shooting ranges, gun clubs, we have three existing now that continue to create a lot of neighborhood issues and frankly, some complaints. We want to make sure if a new use like that comes in, that we have better standards to mitigate some of the issues that the neighbors have if a shooting range comes into your neighborhood. And then recreational land uses. Finally, allowing larger sheds, this was clearly something we heard from the township supervisors. Wasn't necessarily on our radar when we went into this process a year ago, but we heard from a lot of supervisors that it made sense to allow some larger sheds. If you own property and have the space to put up larger sheds, it means that you, more people can leave, keep their stuff inside and not have it parked outside, which creates sometimes some complaints from neighboring properties. So we think those are the big revisions. I'll just delve into them, each one, in a little bit more detail. The heavy industrial, again, this is, we're kind of coming full circle. We, at the county, used to have two industrial zoning districts back in the 1980s and early 90s. We had a heavy industrial and light industrial. Then about the mid-'90s, it was decided that they're becoming so much alike that let's just combine them into one. And then since the mid-'90s, we've had just a rural industrial district. What we discovered in the 2040 plan is some areas guided for industrial uses are in close proximity to some residential areas, typically either in a bluff setting or next to either a wooded setting where there are some homes. And we began to wonder if it's really a smart idea to allow really what we call heavy industrial uses to go into some of those areas. Heavy industrial uses, as it says on the screen, tends to have those greater impacts. Some of the images might capture what you define in more of those heavy industrial uses, but you're probably going to have more truck traffic, more noise, dust, odors, vibration. And so we really decided that we don't want those types of uses to be in some of the areas that we've guided for industrial, even though it might be a good use, or even though some type of an industrial use might be good there, we don't want this type of industrial use. Let's really find appropriate areas for this heavier use. So that's what we've done now, and we'll talk more about that. And we've received probably the most comments so far on this idea of having a heavy industrial district and some of the standards that we've proposed for this district. So we'll talk about the comments and what staff is thinking about those comments. This is one I won't spend a lot of time with only because it's very specific to one property in Louisville Township. It is a mandated new district that MPCA is requiring us to have. So we've mapped it over that closed landfill. The state has developed a plan for what can happen in that closed landfill property. And so our district just says that you can do the things that are permitted in that plan, and you can see the bullets there. Landfill management, natural area management, egg uses, utilities. The only new one that's really come up in the last five years is the MPCA now sees some of these closed landfills as maybe good locations for community solar. And so now that is also added as one of the permitted uses that would be allowed. The third district to cover is the Rural Business Reserve. The image on the left is a board that we use during the 2040 planning process when we introduced this idea to a handful of townships that would get this new designation. So the idea here is that previously, under the 2030 plan and then under our current zoning, we've identified parcels for long-term sewer development. And so the concept is let's hold those parcels until city sewer and water are at the doorstep. And presumably, then the property owner will annex that land into the city. And then that land will develop as a commercial use, a city sewer and water. That concept is, I think, really appropriate to a certain extent outside the city limits. But when we started working with the cities in this 2040 plan to really understand where their long-term sewer and water systems are going to go, we started thinking that some of the parcels that we have zoned in this use are well beyond even a 30-year timeframe. These are parcels smack dab in the middle of Sand Creek Township, where it would take quite a feat for the city of Jordan to annex and grow up the 169 corridor to these parcels or for the city of Shakopee, or should one of the townships incorporate like Louisville and Jackson. It just is going to take a lot of dominos before we really saw some of those parcels become sewer. So instead, we've introduced this new idea of a rural business reserve where we're not going to require the landowner to really not do much on their property other than what's on it today or put up a single-family home. Maybe it's appropriate to allow some business use. And so these areas are primarily along 169 in Sand Creek and Louisville Township, and they're along the Newmarket Township along County Road 46. These areas were guided in the 2040 plan, so we're just following it up with the zoning. About 746 acres would be rezoned into this new district. We've already got some properties that are keeping an eye on when this ordinance is going to get adopted because they already have some proposals that they want to come before us and start plating some of this property, putting up some commercial buildings and doing the uses that we've. and start plating some of this property, putting up some commercial buildings and doing the uses that we've proposed. So, we knew that there's a pent-up market for more rural industrial-type property for contractor yards, landscape supply businesses, indoor storage, just leased commercial buildings, where you can put up a building and lease it out to multiple tenants. We know that there's a demand for this type of use up in the countryside, and so, we think this district will now open up a lot of interest, once we get the ordinance adopted. The fourth one is the hamlet mixed use. Again, on the right is a image of a board that we used. When we went out to the townships, we used this board also at the open house events, along with a lot of different handouts and maps showing where the overlay district would be located. So, the idea here is, right now, most of our hamlet mixed use, or excuse me, most of our historic hamlets are zoned either A1 or urban transition. Those zoning districts are generally one per forty, primarily residential or agricultural use. And so, if you're a commercial establishment today in one of our hamlets, you're considered a legal non-conforming use. You're not allowed in the zoning that you currently have. And this has created some difficulties for some of our existing businesses to want to invest and expand or do anything more on the property, because the zoning just won't allow it. So, that's one situation. We've also had other situations where property owners in our hamlets have come to the office, wondering if they could do a, a commercial-type use on their property. And today, the answer is no. Your zoning won't allow it. You're just zone A1 or, or transition, and there's really no commercial allowed on that property. So, during the twenty forty plant, planning process, there was some discussion about allowing some property owners to invest in these historic hamlets. And in order to do that, we would need to have a little bit more flexibility in the zoning. Again, we learned that this is not a brand-new concept. Goodhue County has a hamlet mixed use on some of their unincorporated little crossroads around Red Wing. We learned a couple of counties in Wisconsin have, have developed this. And so, we took what I thought was a little bit of the best from each of those different zoning districts and came up with some proposals, got feedback from you, got a lot of feedback from the townships, got a lot of feedback from the two open houses. Everything in this overlay would be only allowed as a conditional use, so you'd have notices that would go out and everyone could, everyone in the surrounding, a quarter-mile, would learn about what the proposal is. It would be a public hearing. But the types of uses that would be allowed in this new overlay is listed on the screen. Brew pubs, gas stations, convenience stores, daycare offices, restaurants, retail shops, small animal vet clinics. The other thing that we added, based on some comment from people at the open house, is single-family homes on existing substandard lots. So, today, if you have a lot that is under forty acres in a hamlet, technically, you're substandard. It's legal non-conforming. You have a real difficult time getting a building permit for a new home. We think it's okay to allow some people to put up a new home in some of these smaller lots, and this overlay would then open that up. About five hundred acres would be included in this new overlay. The idea about an overlay is it's on top of the underlying zoning. So, when it comes to how many pets you can have or other things tied to your base zoning, that's what we'd follow, how many animals actually, say, you can keep on your property. So, your base zoning kind of sets the rules. This overlay only allows some additional ability on, on your properties. This is probably the second-most district that we've heard a lot of comments, both during the open house events that I shared with you, kind of the range of opinions and support. And then, even more recently, as of today, I shared with you a comment later on that was specifically about the hamlet mixed use. So, we knew this was a brand-new concept. We wanted to make sure people were aware of this. We sent out flyers to everyone, so that was one way of just making everyone aware of this new district. And then, they were invited to come in to either Spring Lake Town Hall or at the Euphoric Brewery. Across the two open houses, I think we had about forty-four people signed in. I listed the feedback, people that provided written feedback. Wasn't everyone. A lot of people just wanted to talk to us, so I only reported the written feedback. Generally, maybe support for the list of uses. You might say there was general support. It was pretty mixed, though, when it came to lot standards. I think there was a feeling that any new use that comes in should be on a much bigger lot, so it doesn't impact some of the neighboring properties. General support for some site design standards that would be put in place, that would be landscaping and screening and some other things. General support for the boundary of this new proposed overlay. With, with some exceptions, we had a few people that specifically asked if they could either be included or taken out of the, of the boundary during the open houses, and we evaluated that and adjusted some of those boundaries. That was probably the, one modification was adjusting those boundaries based on feedback. The other thing we heard loud and clear is a concern that a gas station or convenience store could really make a major impact on some of these hamlets with the traffic and the lighting, and if it's twenty-four, twenty-four-hour operations. So, one modification that's being proposed is to really limit those gas stations to a small building footprint, kind of like what you would find in a neighborhood zoning where it's a smaller building, five thousand square feet, limiting it to four pump islands. We tried to get the word out, too, in the county scene. We did a fairly lengthy article on all the major revisions in the April-May edition, but we also specifically focused on the hamlets. We also used our online forum, Speak Up Scott County, to get a lot of good input, and we've shared that with you. But there's, it's still a range of opinions. I think there's some support for it, but I think there's an equal amount of opposition to this concept. And I know that I've shared that with you, and, and both you and the county board are aware that there's mixed feelings about this proposed zoning. These are just some screenshots of the zoning map. For anyone in the audience that maybe hasn't seen any of the modif, modifications to the boundary. So, in the brown crosshatches are properties that are now in that overlay. In Marystown, some of the parcels on the west side of County Road Fifteen have been added, or at least we were only capturing half of the parcel, and now, we've gone all the way out to the parcel line. On the right-hand side, where you see the County Road Ten is Lydia. Those boundaries were probably adjusted more on the northwest and southwest corners where some parcels that touched the local township road were not included in the original proposal now are included. On the left-hand side is Saint Patrick. Some of the properties south of County Road Fifty were not originally in the boundary and now show up in the boundary. On the right-hand side is Union Hill, where you had your variance hearing earlier tonight. The modification there is the, I think, the ball field, maybe only a part of the ball field. On the east side of County Road Seven was included. Now, it's all the way to the parcel line. Blakely, we did not make any modifications. I know this is hard to read, but we didn't adjust anything in Blakely. This is a copy of the zoning map. Not a lot of changes, so if you're familiar with our current zoning map, I, I think you'll, you'll not see a lot of change. It's still a lot of gray, which is our A1 agricultural preservation zoning through most of the southwestern part of the county. Still a lot of yellow in the central part of the county. That's the transition area, one, one home per forty acres. So, you'll see, you continue to see a lot of that zoning around Jordan and north of New Prague. Now, just because they're zoned that way today doesn't mean that ultimately, they couldn't rezone and get some additional density. So, parts of, of Saint Lawrence Township have been guided for more of that one per ten cluster. So, a property owner, even though they're going to stay zoned in that UTR, they'd be able to come in and just ask for a rezone to get that cluster density. Most of the eastern part, or yeah, eastern part of the township remains zoned RR1 in that yellow. Little pockets in Spring Lake remain zoned RR2, the two-and-a-half acre density. The one sixty-nine corridor remains predominantly industrial, with a little bit of commercial on the east side of one sixty-nine. And New Market Township along the I thirty-five corridor, again, remains predominantly industrial with this new Rural Business Reserve on County Road Forty-six. So, we've created maps for each of the townships. That's been on our website for a couple of months. Each township got a copy of what their township zoning would look like. We've given them a list of the properties that would change based on this, so they got all that information. Okay. So, we'll switch gears to bluff standards. This is, this is a board strategy to look at how we can not only enhance safety, but make sure that we're being more thoughtful for development along our bluff areas. We've had a couple of lots that have become unbuildable over time because of the erosion that has occurred, and they're, they no longer could even put a house on the lot. We've had a couple of homes fall into the, into the bluff due to erosion. And so, at a staff level, we thought this would be a good time to introduce maybe a deeper setback. Right now, the setback for a home is thirty feet from the top of bluff. You can see in the diagram there. The ordinance is proposing to go back to fifty feet. It would not apply to any accessory buildings or ag buildings, so it's just for that single-family home. Accessory dwelling units. I think I hit this one probably earlier. We've had this ability for someone to put up a granny flat since twenty-ten. Twelve ADUs have been permitted. Most of them have been within the primary home. We, we've only had maybe three or four that were built like what's shown on the picture, where it's, it's a separate building with the unit above a garage typically. Most of them have just been part of the main building. A lot of it's just new construction. Someone's putting up a brand-new home, and they've already factored in the granny flat as part of their floor plans. But again, under the proposed ordinance, we would allow one non-family member caretaker to be in that unit. We had a lot of debate when we went out to the townships about opening it up even further and allowing anyone to occupy the unit and essentially let these become rental properties. And we've heard fairly loud and clear from our town boards, they did not want to see these ADUs become rental properties. And so, staff took that advisement, and we're not recommending that type of approach. It's just a one non-family member, and it has to be a caretaker. All right, so I know there's a lot of words on this slide. I won't go through them all, but generally, we spent a lot of time in the twenty forty plan really being clear on when we're going to require turn lanes and when we're not. And so, we hope this is clear to the development community when they come in for their first concept meeting and show us their layout and show us how their neighborhood is going to connect on to a county road. The first thing that we'll look at is whether it's ultimately going to be an arterial road under our future modeling and mapping. And if it is, we're going to require turn lanes, even if it's a four-lot plat, or if it's three lots, but they're showing a big outlot that it's fairly obvious with a cul-de-sac, that it's fairly obvious that that can be extended and, and serve more than four lots. So, in all those situations, we hopefully were more clear that turn lanes will be required. We won't debate about it anymore. And it will be very clear that those turn lanes need to be built at the time of development. So, those are higher-functioning roads where we think, for safety reasons, it's critical to have those turn lanes. When you go down into some of our lower-level roadways, like our county collectors and even some of our county local roads, where there's minimum traffic, some of them are gravel roads, some of them are just lightly traveled paved roads. If you're developing and along those roadways, you get, a developer will be, be able to get up to ten lots before those turn lanes are required. And some ability to phase that turn lane development in. You can read there on the second bullet. Those, and that will occur in a lot of our townships that have an adopted turn lane fee ordinance. We think there's three or four town boards that have adopted some form of a, a turn lane fee ordinance. So, in those townships, this would be the requirement. In our other townships that have no adopted turn lane fee ordinance, then you're really back to the first bullet. If you do four or more lots, you're going to be required to put in turn lanes. So, when it comes to turn lanes, we've always been pretty consistent, I think, with our subdivision and plating authority that, once someone comes in and plats for new lots, we feel like we have good standing to, through our subdivision ordinance, to require either turn lanes or removal of access points or moving access points to a safer location. We wanted to start bringing that, some of that authority into our zoning ordinance and talk about, even if you're not plating your land, you're just coming in for maybe a zoning permit or a grading permit, and we still want to look at your access locations and work with you to either close, if you have two access points, maybe close it down to one, so you're consistent with our access spacing. Modify the location of that, really introducing that more than just a subdivision plat, but any type of permit that comes in the door, or a proposed zoning ordinance would allow us to take a look at some of those access points. And then, also, sometimes we have a use that's coming in that's not getting platted, but it's going to generate a lot of traffic. We want to make sure that those uses do the proper studies, determine if turn lanes are going to be required, and then, make sure that as part of the permitting process, those turn lanes get built. The third site access issue really comes from some of our attorneys that represent the county and a couple of different legal disputes that we've had over the last ten years. When a development has come in, we require interconnectivity when that development comes in. We require them to stub roads to adjacent parcels, if we know those parcels are likely going to develop. We require, if it's, if it's a longer distance road, what we call a kind of a connector, or excuse me, a collector street, that really is going to serve a lot of traffic in the future, maybe all the driveways shouldn't go on those collectors, but these are those rural township roads that are going to serve multiple parcels as they develop. We make sure that there's logical extensions for those roads. But where, we've also been clear that we do not require a developer to stub a road to just any landlocked parcel, that it may not make sense economically or even traffic-wise to just have roads going, stubs going here and there just because it's a landlocked parcel. Sometimes those landlocked parcels may not even be developable, but yet, we've been told, we've been in a situation where we're not sure if our ordinance is saying we have to require connection to those landlocked parcels. So, working with our outside attorneys that have represented us in a couple of these occasions, we've been looking at this language in yellow, so that we hope, our intentions are more clear that we're not requiring streets to every landlocked parcel that it joins, a parcel coming in the door. We might get a lot of more feedback from our attorneys, so this language could evolve as we go to the county board next month, but I just wanted to let you know about this. Okay, I've talked enough. I'm going to take a small break, because we have now. Marty is going to talk about the mining chapter and some of the revisions. Greg will come up and talk about some of the other topics. I'll come back and wrap it up. Gary, are you still with us?
He fell asleep.
Yeah.
That's why we got the quorum here, just in case.
Good evening, commissioners. I gave Brad a break here, as he said. As he also said, the mining chapter was the only chapter in the ordinance that went through a kind of a total rewrite. What drove some of that is we had, over the last five, six years, we probably had six significant mining proposals in the county. Couple of them happened to be in the belt lane orderly annexation area, so they didn't come forward to this board. But you've actually seen a couple in Saint Lawrence Township here within the past few years, plus those two in the orderly annexation area. So, we've had a number of fairly significant mining operations come forward. I, I think that's what drove a lot of it. Also, when we started looking at the current chapter, it had been in existence for a number of years, and it had been kind of piecemeal together. Created some confusion, and at times, it was difficult interpreting it, so we felt we were better off just to start over. A lot of the information that was in the, the old chapter went into the, the creation of the new chapter. It's ten pages long, so it's not like it's a super-long, super-long chapter or anything, but it, it is a, it is a rewrite. When we undertook the rewrite of the ordinance, we worked real closely with the mining industry folks. We had some of the mining companies that are active in the county very involved with the rewrite of those requirements. Kirsten Polly, who was a principal at Sunday Engineering, was very involved. She does represent probably three-quarters of the mining companies that come through our office with requests. So she's very knowledgeable of our rules. She's very knowledgeable of our process. So having her involved, I think, helped out tremendously. We also worked with the townships. Louisville Township probably most closely. Cindy Nash, their staff planner, was very involved also in the rewrite of these regulations. So it really was a comprehensive update that include, included all stakeholders in the process. And what it did is it took a lot of the things that we were doing in practice and put them into ordinance. So I'll just go through a few of them. Number one, we removed the asphalt, the temporary asphalt plants and concrete plants from the mining chapter. It seemed to add a lot of confusion. We didn't remove the ability to have temporary importable asphalt plants. We just moved them into the uses chapter rather than in the mining chapter. So it's still there, pretty much the same language and allowed in the same areas that they were allowed in before. We expanded the submittal requirements to include items such as groundwater protection plans. Here again, we were asking for groundwater protection plans when people were mining down into groundwater table, but we didn't have it as part of the ordinance. So what we did is took that and built it into the ordinance. So if you're mining within five feet of the groundwater table, we want a protection plan. We asked for cross-sections, showing the extent of a deposit, the amount of overburden, depth of groundwater table. We've added some screening berm requirements. We're starting to ask for viewshed analysis. And what we found is these viewshed analysis are very helpful when it comes to public hearings for the public to see what the impact of the mine's going to be from various vantage points, taking into consideration the vegetation, the topography, stockpiles, conveyors, all that stuff. They can get a visual of when it's superimposed on a photograph on what that'll look like. So something we have been getting here again, but we actually built it into the ordinance because it's been so helpful and for people's ability to see what's happening there. We now asked for traffic study. This wouldn't be required in all cases, but in cases where we probably have a more active mine on a fairly busy roadway, we may want to ask for a traffic study. This at least gives us the ability to ask for that. And it also gives us the ability to ask for blast monitoring plans. Here again, if we did have companies that were doing blasting, we were asking for plans. However, we had no standards. We had nothing developed in the ordinance. So now we have requirements that essentially says that the vibrations created from the blast have to be in compliance with the Federal Office of Surface Mining and Reclamation Safety Standards. So essentially, they need to follow the federal requirements there. Also requires pre-blast notification for surrounding landowners within a half-mile of the mine. So that's something that's built into the ordinance now. It's something we have been, have been getting on the last couple of mines that we've had in areas where we've had blasting. This plan also clearly establishes what needs to be shown in the annual report. Really, for the last probably fifteen years, we've been putting a condition on these interim use permits, requesting an annual report, but we didn't have clear standards for it. So now we want to know how much material was removed from the site, what was reclaimed, where are you moving into next year, is your security still in place and is it adequate for the amount of area that's open? Some other updates that we made with regard to reclamation. We asked for greater information on fill, fill material specifications. This isn't super significant, but we just indicate that you can't use material that includes asphalt, concrete, shingles, that type of thing with reclamation material. We also require that twenty-five to fifty percent of the site is reclaimed to a condition whereby it can be utilized for the type of land use is typical of those permitted within the zoning district. And this is important because this is a new policy that was built into the 2040 plan that wasn't there before. So essentially, it requires us and the applicant to work together to come up with reclamation plans that achieve the standard. Also with regard to reclamation, previous rules required five-to-one finished slopes on a mine. Industry was saying that's a little bit steep. Maybe we should consider three-to-one. In discussion with this board at a workshop, plus some of the townships, we decided to make that recommendation in the ordinance. So the ordinance now has allowed three-to-one finished slopes rather than five-to-one. It also has allotments for high-wall areas that you'll get in quarry operations. So we've expanded some of our reclamation standards to take into account quarry operations. I don't think our old rules really took those into account very well. And that was done in response to comments from the industry. We expanded some of our operational standards, including requiring screening barriers between mines and roads. Also requiring screening barriers between mines and more densely populated residential areas, our two districts, cluster districts, those kind of things. We have access requirements now whereby we can ask for turn lanes, acceleration lanes if necessary for a mining operation based on traffic flow in and out of a mine and what road we're on. We define specific hours of operation for mining operations and blasting. So mining operations that are in agricultural, rural, residential, urban expansion areas, we established hours of seven AM to seven PM Monday through Friday and seven AM to five PM on Saturday. Now obviously, that can be adjusted for unique circumstances that sometimes we get into for mines that are established for specific projects. But overall, that's, those are the hours that we've been establishing in permits. So we wanted to be consistent across one permit to the other here, so we put those in ordinance. As far as blasting, we, I shouldn't say we require, but we're striving for all blasting to be done between the hours of nine AM and three PM. We understand that unique circumstances could come up where it pushes that blast out, maybe past three, thunderstorm is coming and we can't blast, but we have everything set. Rather than sit wait till another day, we allow them to have the blast a little later into the day. But the idea is to strive to have, meet those timelines with our blasting. Also requiring dust control for these mines and put into, put into the ordinance some standards for that. And here again, something we were doing operational, but we didn't necessarily have an ordinance. I think that's the key updates. I guess that stands for any questions?
Are there any questions from the commissioners? Thank you. Good job.
I did have one.
Oh, Commissioner Johnson?
Well, we talked about this afternoon that, and I don't know if this is the right time to talk about the zoning, when it went from, it was going to be ten and it went down to two and a half.
Oh, that's more related to the industrial zoning districts, so we'll talk about that later.
So the next couple of topics are some changes just to some general standards, signs, some uses. I think as Brad did a quick overview earlier. And these are things that we talked both with the planning commission in workshop settings, but we also took to those quarterly township meetings to get their input. So the first thing, sign standards. The main change here is institutional uses like churches. We just had a new church permitted down in Helena Township. And we had a couple of churches in Jackson Township that had contacted us a couple of years ago about adding bigger signage, either on the building or freestanding sign. And we didn't have institutional-type uses. We had them similar to residential agricultural uses. So we felt appropriate that they're more quasi-commercial structures. So we're including institutional sign standards with commercial-industrial. Second thing we did is did an analysis of where we sit with commercial-industrial signage compared to surrounding communities. You can see we were at two-fifty, found that we were probably on the lower end. So we are upping the total square footage to five-hundred square feet and that's a combination of any wall signs or freestanding monument signs. Third thing is adding regulations to allow taller signs at grade-separated interchanges. We have the new interchange, one-sixty-nine and forty-one, that's under construction. A couple of businesses, Rapid Marine was before you guys about a year and a half ago. And one of the things they talked about was, well, now we're going to be lower than the road, so how do we get our signage? So the main thing we're looking at there, what a lot of communities do is they, they don't really increase the signage overall, but they measure it from the grade of the road. So what we're proposing here is to allow the sign to be twenty-five feet above the center line of the road. So it kind of keeps a standard throughout the corridor where as you go to that elevated interchange, your sign can get a little higher. One thing not listed here, we talked about temporary signage. So our larger seasonal uses like the county fair, the Renaissance Festival, Severs, where they're only there for a couple of weeks. A lot of communities do allow temporary signage for those events. So we are proposing to add a temporary sign permit that would allow those uses to have different signage for up to sixty days ahead of their event. The next section, we spent a lot of time talking to you guys and talking with the townships on what we call tricky uses. Some of those that are more controversial. First one, as you see, dog kennels. Our code enforcement officer, Dan Ekholm, he, you know, was always dealing with people that had five or six dogs. Well, our ordinance requires a conditional use permit if you have more than four. Well, if you're just a dog lover and you have six dogs, but they're all yours, he felt there was a need for a different permit level. So what we looked at doing is restructuring how we looked at kennels. So now we'll have three permit types. We'll have an administrative permit. So if you just, for some reason, really love dogs and you want to have up to eight, that they're all yours, privately owned, you can get an administrative permit, which is annually reviewed with the county code enforcement officer just to make sure there's no issues with those additional dogs. If you are wanting to have more than eight, we set the new standard for a private kennel at nine or more dogs, up to twenty-five. So that would require a CUP. And then a public kennel would be, again, five to twenty-five dogs where you're boarding, breeding, or otherwise caring for dogs. Those require a CUP because it's a public use. And we set standards that we talked to you guys about. I know we had a couple of private kennel owners where they had dog runs and things that were closer to their neighbor than they were to their house. So we now added standards that require that outdoor play area to be closer to your house than to your neighbors to try and alleviate some of those neighbor, neighborhood issues. Next one, day parks. Brad had mentioned earlier the YMCA day park. We had Severs Fall Festival come in. Day parks and campgrounds were kind of lumped in together as one use and we didn't feel that was appropriate when we started looking at those two types of uses. So we separated day parks from campgrounds and provided some standards for each of those, what they mean. So what is a day park versus what is a private campground? Not to say that you couldn't do a campground on a site where you had a day park, but you would need to get a separate permit because we feel they're two different uses as to types of people and, you know, having people there overnight versus just during the day. So we added some definitions on that. Hunting club and shooting range, we allowed these, but we never really had standards for them as far as what you had to meet. So if you recall in a workshop, we had presented to the commission standards that we found in other ordinances, needing to have fall zones defined for any trap-shooting areas. If you're going to have pistol or rifle ranges, you need to have berms and other things, and then distances to adjacent neighbors. So we added a lot of language that talked about how these things need to fit and what, how you need to develop the site to make those work. Outdoor recreational uses, these were, again, kind of one of the things that were lumped in with the day park. So what we did here is we took day park out of outdoor commercial recreational uses, made it its own use. The example of outdoor recreational use is our rural ballfields, St. Patrick, Union Hill. Any place that has a baseball field, we have a, we have a couple soccer fields. There's a cricket field down by Bell Plain. We didn't really have a defined use in the ordinance that captured those playfield-type uses. So now we're putting those in what's called outdoor recreational uses. And we have some standards in there for parking and if they want to do lighting. What really triggered this was one of our rural Hamlet ballfields had been talking to us about adding some lights. But we didn't have standards that allowed those uses to expand, so now we will. The third big thing, this was a request, or this was a suggestion actually, that came from one of our quarterly township meetings. Couple of our town boards talked about the amount of detached accessory building space that we allow in the rural areas. And so the chart on the left is our current regulations. And one of the questions that the town boards propose is, you know, can we let people have bigger buildings? You know, people today just have more stuff. They have more recreational vehicles. They have boats, they have campers, they have jet skis, et cetera. So we looked at, again, what other communities had. We, you know, worked with you guys in a workshop to come up with some numbers that we felt were reasonable. So the chart on the right is now our proposed regulations. Each district or each category except for the less-than-one acre is seeing a bump, anywhere from four-hundred square feet to like a thousand square feet. When you get to the ten acres and above, we are kind of redefining those categories. So previously, we had ten to basically twenty acres was four-thousand square feet. We are now going to have ten to fifteen acres be five-thousand square feet. And then fifteen acres up to forty will be six-thousand square feet. We're making that break at fifteen because we currently have a regulation pertaining to home extended businesses where if you have fifteen acres, the current ordinance regulations say you can have six-thousand square feet. So we're kind of just making it fair for everybody that has fifteen acres and saying you can have six-thousand square feet now, regardless if you have a home business or not. And then the other thing we're doing in a couple districts, especially the one-acre to five-acre, we're bumping the max height up by two feet. Typically, people have RVs and they need a taller garage door to get those in, so we're making those changes there. And again, those were supported or recommended and supported by the townships. And so we think it's a good idea to add those.
Back over to Brad. Alright, thanks Greg. We'll quickly run through just a couple more slides and we'll open it up to the public hearing, start hearing from folks that wanted to come and comment. Just a few other notable revisions in the RR1 zoning district. That was a lot of that yellow you saw on the map earlier in Cedar Lake, Spring Lake, Newmarket Township. We're dropping the non-wetland criteria when we look at your density. So right now, if you own twenty acres of land in that zoning district, the first thing we ask is how much wetland you have. Subtract that and then we divide it by ten to see how many densities you're allowed to have under the ordinance. I don't think that criteria really works anymore. It's created a lot of issues, a lot of debate. And staff is recommending we just drop that calculation. And if you come in with twenty acres, we'll divide it by ten and you'll get two home sites. We're hearing more and more from builders. They want to put up a type of home that's becoming popular where it's not only your home, but it's also a fairly large garage or storage building, all combined under one roof. We've seen that version. We've also seen a version where it's a stable home where you are living in the same building that you also want to have your stables. This is a brand-new concept. Our ordinance frankly doesn't allow that type of building because right now your garage cannot exceed the living area. The footprint of your garage cannot exceed the footprint of your living area. And that's why these types of proposals haven't really gone anywhere. But talking to the townships, talking to landowners that are interested in these buildings, we've been, we want to open that up a little bit more. So in certain zoning districts you see on the screen, on certain-sized lots, you can put up this type of home. And then finally, trying to maybe have a better handle on when we do get some drainage complaints. When someone brings their plow out or some type of equipment out and starts rearranging their landscape and starting to flood some of their neighboring properties based on what their activity is. based on what their activity is. Sometimes we can catch them with a grading permit depending on how much land they're disturbing. But we wanted to put in another trigger that would require a permit if you're going to obstruct or redirect the natural flow. And so we've built that into the ordinance. All right, so let's jump into what we've heard so far. Right now we've asked all ten townships to give us any recommendations. On the screen here is what we've heard to date. Helena Township said they had no opposition. Spring Lake said really no opposition. Well, they said no questions or comments. Louisville Township provided a comment letter to, to us, I believe on Monday or Friday. We shared that with you, should be in your packet. They had a, a meeting looking specifically at the minimum lot size in the heavy industrial zoning, that's the I-two. Right now it's proposed to be a ten acre minimum lot size. I think for a good reason that you'll see in that memo that they, the town board really recommends bringing that back down to two and a half acres to really match what's allowed in the I-one zoning. They also had direct contact with some property owners that requested some changes to parcels. And I got a map that will show that. So generally from Louisville Township, they support the lot size change and they support changing the zoning on four parcels. We haven't heard directly from other townships, though I know we have a few of them in the audience tonight and they may be here just to provide some verbal, verbal comments. So we'll hear what those are. Written comments to date, in your packet, you should have seen a copy of a, a letter we received from Elkerson Sales, Brian Rock Products, dated July second, giving a fairly lengthy narrative on their position on the minimum lot size that's being proposed. Again, right now in the heavy industrial, the minimum lot size is ten acres. For a variety of reasons, they're recommending that goes back down to two and a half. A little bit of the evolution there, for a while, the I-two district was going to have totally distinct uses than what we were going to allow in the I-one. So in other words, the only thing you can do in the I-two is, oh, probably twelve to fifteen heavy industrial uses and that's all that you'd be allowed to do. During this process, we got really good feedback that we should really allow in the heavy industrial district everything that you allow in the light industrial district. And then on top of that, allow some of that heavy industrial use. So we agreed with that. In hindsight, we probably should have just changed the minimum lot size too, but we didn't think about that. End of the day, we agree. You can see the staff recommendation, we agree that we should change the minimum lot size and make that change before we go to the board next month for adoption. Beverly Keenan owns property in Sand Creek Township. She submitted a letter that you should have a copy of. She would like more time to understand the difference between her current zoning, which is urban business reserve and this brand new rural business reserve. She also wants a better understanding of when her parcel was zoned. UBR, it should say not URV, but UBR. We have time and I told Beverly that we can take that time. So we agree, we can really make a final decision on that particular PID number when we take this to the board. In our mind, the, whether it's UBR, RBR, it's still consistent with the comp plan. It's still setting the, the land up for future commercial development. The UBR in my mind is more restrictive, but if a property owner requests to be more restrictive, I'll always listen to that. And if they want to have very, they want to have more limited development options on their property, I'm open to hearing that and, and allowing that to happen. Late in the day, Jerry and Robin Schroeder sent an email, you have a copy of that, supported the Hamlet mixed-use overlay district, but was not in favor of gas stations being proposed to be allowed in that overlay or any public businesses. Right now staff is not recommending that we change that. We've heard in our workshops that there is support for that. And so at a staff level, we're not recommending any change. Louisville Township, as I mentioned earlier, submitted a, a letter you should have in your packet dated July thirteenth. Four parcels there are shown on a map. You can see the PID numbers. They're highlighted in blue, a light blue. It might be hard to see. See if I can get. Generally the parcels that I'm showing with the arrow here, there's three of them in this area and the fourth one is up in here. The property owners of these parcels requested that these be zone I-two, heavy industrial. The township agreed and put that in their comment letter. At a staff level, we see no issue with that. And so we also agree that those four parcels should go to I-two and we would make that change on the maps before we took this to the county board for adoption. So with that, we'll open up to the public hearing. We'll try to respond to any comments that we can. And then I'll come back with a couple more slides with the resolution that I have in front of you and a suggested motion when you're ready to make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. We will open to the public hearing. If you'd like to make comment, just approach the podium and please sign in and then start your comments with your name so we have that in the record. Oh, Mr. Davis, I, I don't know, is anyone calling in or are we getting any comments?
Yeah, I know that Greg is monitoring that in the other room, so he'll come out and let us know.
I just wanted to verify that. I know that we're keeping track of that as well. If anyone would like to make comment at this time, this is a public hearing, you can do that.
Guess I'll do it. I'm Andy Jensen. I live in the Lydia area Hamlet. I'm glad Jerry, my neighbor emailed in. He said he was going to. And my only concern is, let me have one second here. Is the, the same comment Jerry had with the gas stations. Not opposed to the residential restrictions for if someone needs a new septic mound and Lydia has very small properties. I'm good with that, putting additions on your house, setbacks and things like that. I don't have a map available, but I, I live on the second house. Is there anybody who could get a map? I'm going to show you my concern. And it's, it's, it's more of a personal, my property. I, I speak for most of my neighbors with the gas station or a microbrew or something. We, we don't feel the need for that, I think generally speaking.
You can use your arrow here, Andy. I meant that one.
Okay, so all these crosshatch sections, I believe these last three were added before the, the, the last thing we talked about. But this red is the commercial property. And this property is, I live here, I'm the second one in, I have this ten acre plot. I've been there for eight and a half years. We love it. And Gail, our, our neighbor who lives in this property, who was, was subject to the initial Hamlet proposed area, whatever. One of my favorite neighbors, she's eighty-nine years old. I anticipate I'll be in my property longer and she's on hers. And it, and it concerns me because the area in red is the old school property. There's that little school there. Those, those tenants are fantastic. I don't know them too well, but they don't live in our little area there and they're all about commercial development. I think they'd be excited to swoop up Gail's property because it's attached to theirs. And they were at one of the Hamlet meetings and the gal was, said, that'd be great, you know? She says, oh, forward progress and I'm not against forward progress. But if, if we had a microbrew or a gas station or something like that, my property would be staring right at this microbrew or gas station, whatever. And to have it limited to five thousand square feet, that's a pretty good sized gas station. Four islands, the Shell gas station in Shakopee is about a four island, five thousand gas or five thousand square foot gas station. That's big. I don't think anybody would be crazy enough to try to plot one in our area there because we just don't have the traffic for it yet. With that being said, I don't want it to be an option either. And I know my neighbors don't as well. Jerry, who emailed you, is this property right here. His concern is he has ten acres and he'd like to be able to split it in half and put a five acre, have his house on the Lydia Langford Road on five acres and maybe build a second house on the back five acres. I don't see any problem with that. I'm, I'm all for single family, family residential development. Not multifamily, not gas stations. I made it clear. You guys have been fantastic. Your presentations are very well documented. I'm, I'm pretty impressed actually. Not taking a shot that they wouldn't be, but it was, there was a lot of information. It's, it's well put out. I guess that's my only concern is I bought this place eight years ago. We, I keep moving south. I've been a Shakopee resident for twenty years. I lived right on Fourth Avenue here, which is now not the cleanest house. I apologize to people who have to see it. But we love Scott County. We keep moving out. We want a little acreage and the, the possible just openness for something other than single family dwellings in our area has me concerned. I have kids, we fly kites and Jerry's hayfield across the place there. We drive tractors. I have a seven-year-old who can drive a hand clutch. I mean, it's, it's a nice little area. We don't want a gas station. And that's, that's kind of my only, the only reason I'm here tonight. We, it's to voice the concern of what could possibly go down. And you said there's no proposed change. I'd like to see a proposal, like change the setbacks. That stuff is fine, just no gas stations or microbrews or whatever. I know country primetime, they're on a, that, you know, that's everybody's favorite place, the snowmobile too and have one of their famous burgers, whatever. It's up to you guys to let them fix it or keep it, whatever. I just don't think we need more. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to make comment at this time?
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bruce Malkerson. My family owns six hundred acres of property on each side of Highway forty-one in Louisville Township. And we were concerned when we saw the proposal to have ten acres as the minimum lot size for the heavy industrial. My understanding that staff is now recommending that it be two and a half acres, which is what it historically has been, I think for thirty, forty years. And also Louisville Township, Thursday night, last Thursday night recommended also that it be two and a half acres. And as I said, the staff is now recommending, so unless there are questions that you have of me or probably Bill Bryan from Brian Rock that has two hundred and fifty acres that are similarly situated, I, I won't go into the reasons since they're set forth in emails and from both me and by Christian Polly.
Thank you, Chris. Let me see the board have any questions, but thank you for our time. Anyone else have any other comments? Okay, at this time I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, are we going to have questions?
Are we going to close first?
Hold off and make sure no one's emailing in in hearings on this. Did you have a question?
Go ahead.
I had several comments. I don't know about the rest of the board, but. The first thing was, our very first sentence says promotes public health, safety and welfare. And our world has really changed since we started this. And I wondered if there was any discussion about pandemics since we began this process. That's my number one question. Mrs., or the letter from the lady in Sand Creek Township. When she only got, she said a notification on June thirteenth, twenty-ninth. In April, I thought we had made notification to property owners. So did we not do anything until June twenty-ninth where she got this letter? So that was a concern. I guess I would like to have every township make some kind of a comment before we move with this. To just say, well, we have no comments or anything. I, I just think we should be on record having something from all ten townships.
You know, and we've made so much effort to, to have them comment throughout the process, but it's, it's interesting. I was, I was equally surprised that they wouldn't even offer some comment. And, and I don't know if when they offer, say, we have no comment means that we're approving of it, but they, even that would be more than saying no comment.
Right.
Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yes, yes. So I think that's about all that I had, but, oh, and another one I had down. Did Blakely not want any type of a change to be in a Hamlet or? I just thought it was kind of unusual and they had the opportunity to have a Hamlet and maybe some development. I know it's a little tiny area. I've been to Euphoric and, so I was just surprised at that.
It's, no, it's, it's a good comment. Mr. Davis, can you address some of that?
Sure, Commissioner Johnson, Chair. So when it comes to the pandemic, I don't recall that we've changed or revised any language based on the pandemic. It really just impacted the process probably more than the actual content. So we didn't rethink any of our zoning or any ordinance rules because of the pandemic. The only time where, where it's even come up in our office is when we've considered if we do get a large assembly permit that came in the door this summer, we've wondered what we would do, do with that permit, if it would violate the executive order. So that's the closest that our ordinance has kind of intersected the whole pandemic. But in terms of the updates, we didn't make any changes. On your question on property owner notifications, so the seventy-seven properties that are being proposed for rezoning, they did get a letter in late June. And the only thing that went out in April was to all the town boards letting them know that it was ready for review. But like any public hearing notice, we got that notice out ten days in advance of this hearing to let people know about tonight's hearing and the change. So it is correct that that letter went out on June twenty-ninth.
It just didn't seem like it was much notice to me. And, and her reasons were really justified when she couldn't get out and.
Yep, we, we recognize that that was an issue. It's, tonight's the night to, I guess, either weigh in on your, your comments. What I've informed that resident is we still have time here. We have another month before we go to the county board. And I wanted to make sure that she knew that date on August eighteenth, that we can keep getting your comments and feedback. So I, I know it is tough during this time to make sure that we can get maximum input when people don't feel comfortable leaving, leaving their house. But that was the situation. We, we had to meet our ten-day notice on those properties. We wanted to give the town boards more time because they meet monthly to collect their comments. But for anyone listening still, if they have concerns, we, there is still time to provide comments before we take this to the board. In terms of the townships commenting, we did get a lot of good feedback in our quarter, quarterly meetings. My impression is the town, the townships are generally satisfied with everything that we've proposed because they kept weighing in and, and asking where we're at. So my general perception is that they're okay with it. But again, tonight, we may have some town supervisors that want to tell us exactly what they think. They're welcome to do that. Blakely does have the Hamlet zoning. So Commissioner Johnson, if you're wondering if Blakely wanted the zoning, they do have that zoning district and it is over the historic part of Blakely.
But they didn't want any expansion of any kind?
Oh, so when we proposed the boundary, we didn't get any landowners or property owners saying, oh, let's move the boundary this way or that way, like we heard in a couple of other Hamlets. So the residents that came to the open house at least and the town board have not asked for any changes to the boundaries. Yep.
It seems like there has been a, a lot of input from ongoing as we've been having these discussions, you know, over the last year essentially, especially when we go out and talk and that it's, it's set the discussion. So I think that they have had a lot of input there.
And my, my last thing was, I really wanted to compliment the staff and I thought we made a lot of concessions to make it easier and better for our residents and our developers and, and people. And I thought you just really listened to people, especially the whole mining thing. I commend them for what you did too, to help us make a better ordinance out of this. And I just think there's a lot of things should be out there.
I, I totally agree and concur with that. And it's a lot of work and a lot of education by staff to, to really be inclusive. And it always works out better. We get better information and I think we have a better chance of, of making a better zoning ordinance at the end of the day or make recommendations for that. But kudos to the staff for all their work over the last, you know.
And we used to have to pay for somebody to do this and now we just have a very capable staff that can do it.
Bob Paper, Bob Paper from Louisville Township. We met with our planner. We put in a lot of comments. We thought we came up with ideas that helped Brad and Marty and Greg. Um, so I just came up to see if you guys had any other questions for Louisville Township.
No, I don't know about that. I, I mean, like I said, you guys have been, uh, giving us information all along. And I felt that that's been, you know, and been part of the process, really. And I think that that's helped us.
Supervisors that we have at Louisville Township, our residents put us there for a reason. And we do our best to, you know, keep them in the loop and they give us the feedback. So, we bring it to you guys and hopefully we can all come up with a better idea.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any more comments? At this, at this time I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Henshaw. I will call for the roll call vote on this. Uh, Commissioner Henshaw?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Hoof? Yes. Public hearing is closed at this time. Uh, can you have further discussion? I'll entertain a discussion. Uh, Mr. Davis?
Yep, to help in your discussion now after the public hearing, uh, staff has prepared a resolution for you. Sometimes when we are looking for more formality in your motions and actions, we put it in the form of a resolution. This is how we move the comp plan through the process and this is how we want to move the ordinances through the process. So you have a copy of this in front of you. I promise I won't read it word for word, but we basically reflect some of the statutes that give, uh, the county authority to, to do zoning and plating. We talk about the, the reason why we're doing these comprehensive revisions after we've adopted the twenty forty comprehensive plan. We know that time to time we need to make amendments to the ordinance. We call this, um, comprehensive revisions, meaning we touch a lot of chapters at once and package them up into one big process. But next month, if someone wants to propose a change, then we take these amendments individually. And as you know, that we do take different amendments from time to time. Um, so this does not mean that this ordinance won't change again. This is just one of those times every ten years where we do them all in one big lump. We have had very extensive public input. We did duly notice the public hearing. We believe you've reviewed all the comments that we've received, both before the public hearing and tonight at the public hearing. You do have the authority to recommend board adoption of these revisions. And, um, based on your motion later, you have a resolution that's prepared for, for you. Um, and so as we do in all of our staff reports, we give you a suggested motion. You can see it in italics here, but we do recognize that coming out of your motion, you may agree with some of the staff recommendations that we would change before we took the ordinances and maps to the county board. They're bulleted there. One was to change that minimum lot size and I two heavy industrial zoning district to two and a half acres. Second one is to change the public hearing, uh, draft zoning map to show those four parcels that I had in a graphic up going I two. But most important, I have two placeholders because I didn't know what else we would hear tonight. So if you heard something tonight that you think also warrants a change, if you want to reflect on some of the comments we've heard on the hamlet mixed use, both Andy and, um, Gerald and other people who've commented when we have the open houses, if you think any of that's open for you to debate or think about differently, this is your time to kind of think about any of those changes. You would add it to this motion. And, um, you guys would then vote on that motion. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
Now, we referenced some Minnesota statutes. But you also talked about a federal requirement on our note, on our mining. Do we have to reference that, any federal thing?
Um, not in any of these motions to, in these resolutions to move the ordinance. But within the ordinance itself, we often do, um, refer to federal statutes. Yep.
So do we need to read the motion into the record?
Um, it wouldn't hurt, given, um, how we're doing this telecommu- or this remotely. It wouldn't hurt it. Maybe as a chair, if you read it in.
I can read the motion in, and then, and then I'll read it into the record and then we'll decide on the motion.
Sounds good.
Does that sound, is that amenable to commissioners? Okay. This is testing my reading skills. Okay, uh, okay. Um, this is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero one, Resolution, uh, twenty twenty dash zero, zero, one, recommending the approval of Scott County zoning ordinance number three and Scott County subdivision ordinance number seven. Whereas Minnesota State Statute three nine four point two one, three nine four point three seven, five oh five point one one, authorize Scott County to serve as the zoning and plating authority in the unincorporated area. And whereas, under Minnesota State Statute four seven three point eight six four, the county board's adoption of Scott County twenty forty comprehensive plan on June eighteenth, twenty nineteen necessitates comprehensive revisions to the county zoning and subdivision ordinances, i.e. official controls, in order to promote public health, safety, and general welfare by providing for orderly development of land for agricultural, residential, commercial, industrial, recreational, and public land uses. And whereas, from time to time, certain amendments or revisions to zoning and subdivision ordinances are necessary for effective enforcement of said ordinances. And whereas, extensive public input has occurred through public open houses, town board meetings, public hearings, and individually and collectively with all jurisdictions within the county. And whereas, Scott County duly noticed a public hearing on the aforementioned zoning and subdivision ordinance revisions. And the Planning Advisory Commission held that public hearing on July thirteenth, twenty twenty at approximately six forty-five P M. And whereas, Scott County Planning Advisory Commission reviewed all comments received before and during the public hearing and recommended certain modifications to the draft zoning and subdivision ordinances based on those comments. And whereas, the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission has the authority to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners adopt revisions to the county zoning and subdivision ordinances under Minnesota State Statute three nine four point three zero. Now therefore be it resolved by the Planning Advisory Commission in and for Scott County that the proposed provisions to the county zoning and subdivision ordinances are hereby recommended to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. That is the, uh, the resolution, uh, that would go with this motion. This time I'll, uh, entertain any further discussion or, uh, movement on a motion.
Mr. Chair, this is probably a dumb question, but why is it always ordinance number three? It was that way in two thousand and one, two thousand and nine. Why doesn't it ever go to ordinance number four? Why does it not change?
Yeah, good question, Commissioner. So the county has maybe twenty different ordinances. Zoning and subdivision is just one of them. I think we have an ordinance on public health. We have an ordinance on addressing. So we have a variety of topics where we have an ordinance. And, um, this was just the third one back when the county was, uh, adopting ordinances. So it's, uh, the zoning has always been number three and the subdivision has always been number seven.
Not a dumb question at all. Any other questions or comments? Any other discussion?
Excuse me, did you mean to include the recommendations that weren't read, uh, by the chair on the suggested motion?
Yeah, these, yes, these will be on this, these will be part of the motion. I just wanted to read in the, the, uh, recommenda- or the recommend approval, the official motion, but those will be included. These will be included. This, the suggested motion that you're seeing up on the screen there is what will happen for approval.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I make a motion based on all comments received and reviewed prior to and during the public hearing. I recommend approval of Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero zero one with the following changes made to the draft ordinances and maps prior to county board action.
Go ahead and read those.
Read, let's continue. Change the minimum lot size in the one dash two heavy industrial zoning. That's I dash two heavy industrial zoning district to two point five acres. Second bullet point, change the public hearing draft zoning map dated four one twenty to show P I D numbers seven zero zero, seven zero zero one zero, seven zero four four, zero zero one zero, seven zero zero, seven zero zero four one, and seven zero three two, zero zero one zero as I dash two heavy industrial.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? A motion by Commissioner Robbie, a second by Commissioner Johnson. At this time I will call the roll to vote on this motion. Commissioner Henshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Von Hoof? Yes. The motion is approved. Thank you very much. I'd like to, uh, before we adjourn here, thank everyone who attended this evening and who's been here over the last year, offering input to the citizens and commend the staff for their hard work and the commissioners for all the work that's been done and the township boards, everyone who's given input. Thank you very much and, uh, like to just thank everyone. Good work tonight. And our next item is the planning manager update and I'll go to Mr. Davis at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Since our last meeting in June, there's a handful of projects that went to the county board for final approval based on your recommendation. On June sixteenth, the county board approved the request to extend the preliminary plat rights for territory development in Credit River Township for an additional six months. That would go out to December thirty-first of this year. The board approved the request for the conditional use permit amendment to construct an office building and other site alterations for the web pallet service in Sand Creek Township. They approved the preliminary and final plat of Cabbish Farms consisting of ten lots on about a hundred acres in Cedar Lake Township. They approved the request for rezoning preliminary and final plat of the Johnson Family Ridge, uh, plat that created one lot and two outlots in Blakely Township. They approved the rezoning preliminary and final plat of Shimoda Acres that created eleven lots and two outlots in Cedar Lake Township. And on July seventh last week, they approved the requests for a conditional use permit amendment for the operation of Final Grade and Excavating Company in Sand Creek Township. That is all the, uh, updates I have for you this, this evening.
I, I just have a quick question. How long will we continue in this format? Or is this just a, kind of we'll continue and see what happens, basically?
Yeah, good question, Chair. I think we would like to continue in this format where we have at least a quorum in the room for, uh, our future meetings. I would ask that if you're open to it, maybe we allow the two that were not able to come this month to participate in person if they would like to next month. And that means two of you would have to be willing to, um, not be here. And maybe do that for another couple of months and we'll just see if we can slowly get everyone back into their, into the room. It is nice to have frankly the chairs of the planning commission and the board present. I think it helps with the, um, flow of the meeting a little bit better. So I guess that's Tom and, and Gary. If Gary's able to next month, at least have those two in the room. And then if a couple of you would be willing to let Lee or, well, I guess primarily Lee be here if he chooses to. I haven't talked to him, but we can, we can talk to him. I think we'll do that for the couple of months.
Will we continue to have, uh, um, public access, you know, electronically essentially on our, on our public hearings and, and participate in the meetings that way?
We'll continue to put them on YouTube. We'll continue to allow people to view them and submit comments via email. We'll continue to ask the applicants if they want to be present to come. Otherwise, we'll allow them to come in through the Skype call. Right now our limit in this room was ten and I, and we were close to ten. Sometimes we got a little bit over ten. But I think we can continue to just plan on that in this room.
And, and people seem to be respecting social distancing even when they were in here. I mean, it, it, and I don't know how, how it's working out in the hallway, but, but certainly within here, people seem to be doing that pretty well.
Yep.
So, well, I just wanted to kind of, so people have an idea on that and the commissioners also kind of understand, you know, how we're moving forward with this.
Brad, would, excuse me?
No, go ahead.
Would you, assuming, let's say that everyone wants to come in person, you would be doing the rotation, letting us know?
I, I think I will. If, if, if it's not just an agreeable thing like, yeah, I'm out of town or for whatever reason I can come, then I'll just pick a, a rotation, but I'll, I'll try to.
Know that prior, obviously, prior.
Yep, and I'll consult with you. I want to make sure that I'm meeting your needs, so. But I'll just consult with you individually, see if, um, how that could work out.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if the chair isn't here, you have to make sure the vice chair.
Vice chair. I think that would be the best, yeah.
Yeah.
But we can sort that out.
This, yeah, and it's just a little bit of the situation is that it just goes, you know, we don't know what it, how it evolves, but, uh, okay.
What do the future meetings look like? Can you tell next month or?
In terms of items? Do I have Marty still here? Marty, what's on the agenda for next?
So next month, I know we have a final plat, um, for the one sixty-nine commercial site that you saw, heard the preliminary plat on back in June. Um, we also have a rezoning, uh, two and a half acre rezoning in Spring Lake and possibly a variance. So, uh, relatively small, nothing very controversial, um, for next month, so.
As far as we can tell.
At this point, um, yeah. But we know, right?
Okay. Um, I, and I do want to say again that, before we adjourn, that, um, it was a lot of work on the, this zoning ordinance for, for all the staff. That's a lot of extra meetings, a lot of extra time and a lot of extra outreach. And, um, probably in my time, you know, in the last twenty-five years, the most I've seen a staff do on a, on a project. And, and, and I know a lot of commissioners have been doing this for a long time and, you know, um, it's, I just think that the result has been much better and that the effort at working together with citizens and, and companies and really is evident. And, uh, and I think that that's, uh, it just really, we came out with a much better product that we, than we would have by going out and asking for the involvement. And I, I think that that's, uh, I think that's, it's just kudos to, to Brad and, and Marty and Barb and Greg and Nathan. I mean, everyone who was involved and, and all the staff were really involved in different ways in, in contributing to that. So, uh, it's a really good job and, and, uh, that's the way I feel.
I did all that, yeah, definitely.
I, I thought that even in twenty thirty, there was a lot of reach out. But it seems like this has been a little bit more collaborative.
Yes.
The townships for some reason.
Yeah, and that's, and that's exactly it. I mean, you know, because I, I agree with you. And that's it. It just, it just seems like it just, your efforts really, um, came together. So I just wanted to say that before we adjourn.
Unconsistently amazed at what a good job staff does.
Yeah, yes.
In, in practically any category.
Yeah, yeah, in dealing with difficult issues and, and, and.
Know that your heads won't be able to get through the door. So you guys.
Okay, well, um, before we adjourn, everyone stay well, stay healthy.
Yep.
Yep.
And, uh, it's, uh, I won't even call for a roll to adjourn. I'll just do a voice for our last one, all right? Everyone in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.